Aloha, kakahiaka kako. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for your patience with us. We had some technical difficulties to work through, but I think we are all good now. So, welcome to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Director, roll call, please.
Good morning, Commissioner Hipoito.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, fellow commissioners, director. I'm in my office in Kahului, Alum.
Mahalo, Commissioner Ke'Loa.
Good morning, wonderful to see everybody this morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Good to see everyone.
Good morning, Vice Chair Thompson.
Aloha, top of the morning, doll.
Oh, no, no. Chair Thayer.
Yes, I am here. Good morning again.
All right, so just going through our agenda for today, we have one public hearing item, two communications items and an orientation workshop. But a note on item C2, we need six members present to be able to take action on that. So C2 is going to get deferred to our next meeting when we hopefully have at least six members present. But for now, we will go into our public hearing item B1. Director, please read us into the record.
Robin Garner requesting a change of zoning from agricultural to R2 residential for a substandard agricultural lot of 30,922 square feet, 0.7099 acres located at 1550 Nukuna Place, Waileku, Maui, Hawaii at TMK 236007010. This is CIZ 2021 0002. And Aliki, planner.
Please go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. As stated by Director Blyston, the item before you this morning is a change in zoning from agricultural district to R2 residential district for a substandard agricultural lot, approximately 30,922 square feet in size, which is roughly 0.71 acres, located at 1550 Nukuna Place in Waileku, Maui. The subject property is located in County Agricultural District. The change in zoning from agricultural district to R2 residential district would bring the property into conformance with its current use and its community plan designation of single family. The existing main dwelling was built in 1952 and the applicant plans to renovate it and add an additional 400 square feet. The main dwelling has a garage and carport. There are three other housing units on the property, two of which have carports that are used for long-term rentals. The parcel is state land use district urban. The community plan designation is single family. The Maui Island Plan is small town and the county zoning is agricultural. The change in zoning application requesting a change in zoning from agricultural district to R2 residential will conform with the community plan designation and current use. The property has a longstanding use as a residential property. The four dwellings were built in 1930, 1952, and two in 1970. The project will be explained in further detail by the applicant and owner, Robin Garner. Thank you.
Thank you. It's Ms. Garner here. Online? Oh, there we go. Are he?
Good morning.
Oh, I can, yes.
Can you hear me?
I think we can hear you.
Awesome. Okay, sorry, it is cutting in and out here. So hopefully I can get through the presentation and time before it cuts out. All the members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present this request today. My name is Dr. Robin Garner and I am the owner of the property located at 1550 Nukuna Place in Waileku. My family has lived in Waileku for about 150 years and over 80 of those years in this particular plot of land. So this property is not just land to us. It's part of our legacy, a tangible connection to our ancestors and a cornerstone of our commitment to this community. Today, I'm here to request a zoning change from agriculture to residential. This change will bring our property into alignment with its current and intended future use and will allow us to continue improving and maintaining the land for our future generations. Our family has always viewed ourselves as caretakers of this land and this zoning request is part of our ongoing stewardship of the property, ensuring that it will continue to serve our family and the broader community for generations to come. I have a simple quad chart that's available for this presentation. Are you able to see it?
Oh, we don't see you on screen right now.
Okay, let me see if I can share my screen. Is my screen being shared? Yes, I can see that. You're gonna see everything now, yourselves, the presentation of my speech.
Yes, yes.
Awesome, okay. Sounds good. So top right quad, the primary goal of the zoning change is not to add new dwellings or increase the overall density of the property, but to improve the...
One second. It's showing up really small on our screen.
Okay.
Do you think you make it?
Let me try this. Okay.
You may want to try just sharing the one application instead of your entire screen because that way it'll fill up the whole screen for us. So if you stop share and then just share the one application, it should be better. It is also in the commissioners packets as well.
It is. It doesn't give me the option to share just the one PowerPoint application.
Okay.
Would it be better if I not share and reference the packet?
I think for everybody online, it's gotta be the same.
It is in the packets. So you should be able, for those online, you can take a look at the packet. Candace, do you have a suggestion?
Yeah, I can run it from here, or Leaky, excuse me, Leaky can run it from here, the presentation. Oh, although, look. Oh, no, no, that was my screen. We can run, I'm like, oh, it looks big. Because that's what I'm looking at. We can share my screen and then the applicant, Dr. Garner, if you just say next for the next slide, then Leaky, Staff Planner Leaky, can click it for you.
Perfect.
Okay, easy day for her then because there's only one slide. And I'll just go through the different quads. Okay, let me know when you're ready.
She's just loading it, one second.
Sounds good. Awesome. I can see it on my end.
Yep.
All right. Is it good to continue?
One second, okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so top right quad, the primary goal of the zoning change is not to add new dwellings or increase the overall density of the property, but to improve the existing structures and make the property safer for both my tenants and my family. The land's narrow width combined with the other factors make it physically challenging to accommodate the full build-out potential that R2 zoning might allow. So instead, I am focusing on enhancing the four existing dwellings that are already on the property. This includes necessary renovations to update and improve safety features as well as addressing some of the infrastructure needs to ensure that the property remains habitable and up to code for the long term. The zoning change will allow me to streamline the permitting process for these improvements and make the necessary upgrades to the property, ensuring it continues to serve as a safe and viable residence for everyone living here. It is important to emphasize that the intent is not to add additional units, but to enhance the quality of life for the current tenants and maintain the property in a way that aligns with the charter of the surrounding neighborhood. I'm going to move to the bottom left quad for impact assessments. Currently, the property is connected to the county's water system. It supports four existing dwellings and the surrounding landscape. However, there's no county sewer system available at this time. Instead, the property uses individual cesspools. I understand that as part of the zoning change, future development could involve the expansion of the wastewater systems and we're planning to connect to that when it's ready. I have been in discussions with the Department of Health and their guidance is clear. Individual wastewater systems will be required for any future construction until the planned sewer expansion is completed, which is expected around 2030. Additionally, the property is located in flood zones X and AE. While the AE zone covers only a small corner of the property in the very back end, there are no structures located in that area so we don't anticipate significant impact from flooding. But I will ensure that all necessary drainage and flooding management measures are met when developing the property. I'm going to move over to the bottom right quad, which is community engagement. We understand that the community, we understand that community impacts such as public safety and infrastructure are important considerations. The property is located in a quiet residential neighborhood that is already served by the Waileku Fire Station and Maui County Police Station as well as healthcare facilities like the Maui Memorial Hospital. The fire department has provided feedback and recommended ensuring adequate fire protection measures such as access for emergency vehicles and hydrant placement, which I will fully comply with. I'm committed to ensuring that any future construction will meet these and other public safety requirements. We do have an unfortunate example that the fire department is able to service the property well. Unfortunately, on August 8th, we also had a fire the far end of our property and the fire department did an outstanding job pulling the water from the fire hydrant at the bottom in Lulupoyo all the way up to the back corner of our property and was able to put out the fire. So that was a fantastic job on their end.
And then in terms of traffic, this area is already a low traffic, it's dead end. It's a residential neighborhood and any future development...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that was somebody else turning on their song. You can keep going.
Thank you. So any future development will be carefully designed to minimize disruptions while this zoning change would allow for the potential to build up to 12 residential units. I don't see it possible and I don't anticipate any major changes to the traffic patterns or strain on public services out here. And I believe I may have actually just, I did actually go over the planning and technical analysis as I was going through the left quad. So if there are any other questions for the top right quad, I'm happy to address them. Otherwise, I'll conclude and summarize. So in conclusion, the request of rezoning of this property from Ag to R2 is about more than just compliance with the zoning regulations. It's about honoring a deeply personal family legacy. This change will allow us to improve the existing dwellings and provide a safer, more livable environment for our tenants and family without subdividing or selling a property. This project began with the goal of creating a safe space for my grandmother and my mother, both of whom have passed away unfortunately. Their vision was to provide stability and security for the future generations and the zoning request is a step forward to fulfilling that vision. So as a family, we are committed to staying here, improving the property and ensuring it remains a stable home for years to come. We are invested in this community and want this property to continue to serve positively and sustainably. So I request, respectfully request, your favorable recommendation for the zoning change and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Clarifying questions from the commission before we open up public testimony. Mr. Thompson, Vice Chair.
Thank you. And thanks for coming today or being online. And my question for you is how many people reside at that property already?
So as of right now, it's actually just me and my husband. When the renovations are complete, it is able to, there's, there will be three three-bedroom homes available for rent in addition to the three-bedroom main house. But right now, it's just two of us.
Okay, and one other is, did you look at putting a septic instead of cesspool?
Yes, so there are those considerations. We have one more building permit to go through and I'm working with the health department on what's actually required. But the cesspools, according to the health department, for the three rental units are sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so no further questions. At this point, we can check for public testimony. Does anybody sign up to testify? Okay, last call for testimony. You can sign your name in the chat if you wish to testify. Otherwise, public testimony will be closed. Okay, it looks like we have one person signed up to testify, Mr. Johann Law. Please go ahead, you have three minutes.
Aloha, Johann Law testifying on behalf of myself and I support this change in zoning. I don't have any relationship with these folks or anything like that, but I think this is kind of what we want is renewal and redevelopment of places that are already developed and if it can result in housing that is a little better for the people who live there and stuff like that. It kind of goes along with all the general plan, the community plan, all that kind of stuff. And this is an area that is close to infrastructure, public transit, shops, jobs. So I am in full support of their change in zoning. Mahalo.
All of your testimony. Any questions for the testifier? Okay, seeing none, thanks again. Anybody else signed up to testify? None at this point. Okay, public testimony, last call, closing in three, two, one. Public testimony is closed. Commissioners, any further questions?
Yeah, well, maybe to the county.
Vice Chair.
Sure, maybe to our chair. Our director, do we permit cesspools? I thought we went to septic already. Cesspools are like the big no-no thing.
So I'm only going to address the issue at hand, which is rezoning. So I can't, maybe the planning department doesn't deal with that issue. So I can't, I can't speak to that.
Well, thank you.
Any further questions from the commission?
If we don't, if we don't deal with cesspools and septics, can we put it in as a, can we put it in as a condition of the permit? Septic?
So just as a reminder, this is a change in zoning. So all you're doing is making a recommendation to the council to either approve or deny it with conditions if need.
Do you want me to?
Oh, Mr. Hopper?
Yeah, just, I mean, I don't think that's an irrelevant question. I mean, I think you can, if you want to find that information, you can. I don't think the planning department would necessarily have that. I think the State Department of Health, if they're in correspondence with them, maybe could provide you that information. I don't know if there's anything in the documents. The change in zoning would allow the property to be used as a residential use rather than an ag use. And if there's existing cesspools, whether you grant the zoning change or not, I think they're going to have to deal with that issue if they're talking about those dwellings. But if you want that information or you think council should have that information, that's something you can, I guess, put in your recommendations. But I think that's going to be a separate issue for them whether or not they get a change in zoning because that's just based on the residential use. So I think that's going to exist regardless. But I'm not saying that's not an irrelevant thing. If you see that that conversion to residential has a potential for different impacts and you think cesspools are a problem there, I think you can ask that. But hopefully there's a clear answer for that because if they have to deal with that, they're going to need to deal with that whether there's a change in zoning or not.
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess because we need to switch, what is it, 2015, we need to switch to septic. So I guess I just was bringing it up now as something that they might consider thinking about if they were to expand.
Ms. Garner, Mrs. Garner, can you tell us a little bit more about your situation with the cesspools switching to IWS and then connecting to the county water line? I mean sewer line?
My conversations with the state health department for the...
Oh, you cut out.
Grandfathered in.
Sorry, can you, can you start again? You cut out for a few seconds.
Sorry, yes. So for my conversations with the state health department regarding the cesspools for the three rental units in the back of the property, they are grandfathered in and sufficient for the size of the home. So they don't need to be changed. For the main house, we are going through the building permit process right now. And there are discussions on whether or not a septic system does need to be put in place while we wait for the county sewer system to come in or if the current use is also grandfathered in since the changes are actually minimal, the renovation changes are minimal. Either way, we have been instructed that when the county sewer line comes through in 2030, we are required to connect to the sewer system at that time.
That's good. Up with you, Vice Chair.
Have you looked into doing leach fields in a septic system there? Is it more expensive?
Yeah, our contractor is specifically looking at the leach fields that we have, the areas that we have around us right now because there are sufficient areas for a leach field to put in septic systems if that's required.
So there is room. My concern is about, we have a cumulative problem there. And if we change this, then we're going to open up to what? Six houses? And if we have six places running to, we got a problem. We got a problem in the soil.
Yeah, actually, for R2, it's interesting. It says we can have up to 12 units on this property just due to its size, but I think physically, because the property is so narrow, it's not possible to actually put in any more houses already here. Could only keep the four.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? That's good. Any other questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none, we didn't have the recommendation from the department?
In consideration of the foregoing, the planning department recommends that the Maui Planning Commission adopt the planning department's report and recommendation prepared for the November 12th, 2024 meeting and recommends that the Maui Planning Commission recommend approval to the Maui County Council for the change in zoning from agricultural district to R2 residential, subject to no conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. We can entertain a motion. I guess maybe to, you know, address your concerns, you could potentially put in a condition for only four units as there is now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Director?
Just something for consideration. What the applicant said is that the the current use and arrangement of the number of, sorry, the number of dwelling units that are possible on that property is limited already by their ability to access sewer. So limiting it further to four, I think, let me just say globally, I think adding conditions to zoning is not a great idea overall. That your zoning is your zoning. The reason we have the zoning code is because it has a series of restrictions already built into it and adding additional conditions on top of it makes it more difficult to administer in the future. So I just encourage you to consider that. Of course, we'll do whatever you ask, but I wanted to make that case here briefly.
Vice Chair?
Now, I thought I read it, I was checking here. Isn't there grading for another house in here too? Did I read that? They're grading off a lot in here, was that?
I think it was the remodel.
Yeah, there's grading for the, they're going to add some square footage to the main dwelling. And when you're adding square footage, there's going to have to be some grading of the lot under where they build the addition to the main house.
Okay, that's what it was. Okay, thank you.
Further questions or we can entertain a motion? Commissioner Ward?
I move to accept the planning department's recommendations as outlined.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second from Vice Chair, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just listening to the testimony for the presentation, I think it's important for us to support the community and maintain the land and rebuilding on existing properties, specifically with the legacy and history of it there. For that reason specifically, I think it's important that we have an approval.
Thank you. From the second?
Nothing to add.
Okay, further discussion from the other commissioners?
Seeing none, I guess I would say that I concur with Commissioner Ward in that this is, you know, a generational family that is trying to do as good as they can with the land that they have. And, you know, given all the conversations we have in our community all the time, even now, this is exactly what we should be enabling. So, thank you. I guess there being no further discussion, we can call for the vote.
Commissioner Hipoito?
Aye.
Commissioner Ke'Loa?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson?
Chair Thayer?
Aye.
That's five votes. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Temperature check, commissioners. We're only half an hour in. So do you need a break or should we go right into our next item? Okay, onward. Amazing. It's like record time. All right, so we have our next item on the agenda. Director, could you read us into the record, please?
Of course. Pre-hearing conference for notice of appeal, APL 2023 000302 and notice of appeal, APL 2023 00003 in the matter of Kahana Sunset Building F repairs and maintenance. Building A, emergency repairs issued by Ms. Kathleen Ross Ooki, planning director and appealed by the appellant under Surf Rider Foundation, Na'apai, Va'au'ula, Kamalu'ou, Kahalawai, Kainashiki, Tiare Lawrence. Lawrence's consolidated notice of appeal from director's decisions, declaration of Jill Wirt, declaration of Kainashiki, declaration of Tiare Lawrence, declaration of Glenn Kamaka, exhibits 01 through 47, certificate of service, shoreline setback approval and special management area exemption for limited repairs to stabilize the foundation for Building F consisting of 12 townhomes at the shoreline of Kahana Sunset A'ao'ao and 80-unit condominium and approval for a SMA emergency permit for repairs to the current seacoal under Building A at the Kahana Sunset A'ao'ao consisting of 10 townhomes at the shoreline of Kahana Sunset A'ao'ao and 80-unit condominium located at 4909 Lora Honopilani Road, Kahana, Lahaina, Maui, Hawaii TMKs, et cetera.
Thank you, Director. That was a long one. Okay, next, let us have the parties introduce themselves, the appellants, followed by the applicant, followed by the county.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commission. Ryan Hurley here alongside Bianca Saki, both appearing via Zoom on behalf of the appellants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Chair, commissioners. Call Chip Chase for Kahana Sunset.
Thank you. Is there somebody from the county present? Okay, okay. Is he there? Mr. Billberry? Are you online?
I can email?
Yes, please.
Or I don't have to just tap you down?
You know what you can do now? Teens message him. I'm gonna do that right now. You can. This propaganda. Oh, man, I'm just gonna do this. He's offline, so what about it? Oh, according to, okay.
Oh, look, he's not.
Join the collective, yeah. Resisting.
That's okay.
Mr. Billberry, are you there? Thank you for your patience, everybody. We are trying to get a hold of the third party for this item. Five-minute recess? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Let us be back at, well, 9:45, six minutes. Okay, welcome back, everybody, to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. We had a little longer recess than intended, but we have all of our parties here now. Um, we already had the appellant and the applicant introduce themselves. Would you be able to introduce yourself on behalf of the county?
Hey, good morning, folks. Deputy Corporation Counsel Brian Billberry.
Thank you.
Chair, if you want me to set the show.
Go ahead.
Mr. Hopper? Chair, I think where we're at is that you had set that most of the dates for this hearing, other than the decision on whether to allow discovery, I don't think there was enough votes to take action on that. Um, and so right now, we're considering whether to allow discovery in this matter, and if so, uh, the scope and schedule that discovery, so the parties can address the motions that they've set forth on that, and uh the, the other parties can respond. So I'd suggest you allow the um, the appellant slash move-ons some time to discuss their motion. Um, and then time for both the uh applicant and county to respond, and then perhaps rebuttal from the move-on. And I think that's the only issue at the moment for you to deal with on this, uh, on this item. Unless, the parties can feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's where we're at, Chair.
Yep, I concur with you. So, parties, having heard this um from Mr. Hopper, let's have you each take time. Um, how many, how much time do you think you will need, Mr. Hurley?
Aye, Chair, um, probably no more than 10 minutes.
Okay, um, we will give up to 10 minutes apiece. You can re, um, reserve some of your 10 minutes for rebuttal. Um, so staff, you can take time. Okay, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Uh, Ryan Hurley here, uh, again alongside Bianca Saki, both appearing via Zoom on behalf of the appellants. Um, first, just a brief update. On October 25th, uh, Judge Cahill in the Circuit Court granted the A O A O's motion to dismiss uh the majority of appellant's circuit court action. As a result, uh, the injunction hearing that was previously scheduled for the 31st that we talked about pretty significantly last time, that did not take place, and therefore there have been a number of unresolved issues uh that I think people assume might be resolved in that injunction hearing. Um, this means that the substantive issues relating to Kahana Sunset, they're gonna be addressed at the agency level, and, and we believe that's at the planning commission, that, that's why we're here. Um, we think that this really highlights the, the need and the necessity to make sure that the commission has all the necessary information so they can do a thorough analysis uh and, and, and make sure it has a, a, a complete record to, to make an informed decision, as well as possibly uh make a, make any conditions that they deem necessary. Um, uh, despite, you know, the almost comical assertions in the A O A O's opposition to our discovery, um, we're not seeking to, to do a fishing expedition here. Uh, it's been, been noted a number of times that this is a very significant matter, and, and, and this is gonna have have lasting impacts on, on a number of other properties on, on the Maui, Maui shoreline. So we think that it's absolutely critical that the commission has all the information that it, that it can, that it can get and to make this informed decision. Um, and in fact, we have limited our discovery to very four very distinct areas. Um, and just to run them through very quickly, we, we want information on the necessity and the scope of the proposed stabilization. Next, we also want information on the timeline for removing the structures. Also, we're seeking information to, to understand how the county can hold Kahana Sunset or the A O A O accountable for permit conditions, right? There's a number of conditions that have been attached to permits over the years, and we've seen some issues with those being met. How can the county, we want discovery on how the county can make those conditions and how they can kind of enforce those conditions. And then finally, we're looking for information uh regarding the inconsistent analysis from the Maui Planning Department, which we'll get into that later, but it seems that they're analyzing uh the proposed structure as both a repair and a new seawall, and not a lot has changed. So first, getting into the, into the, the first issue, uh, the necessity and scope of stabilization required. It's been noted that this is out, by the county and the A O A, that this stabilization is required for public safety, which we get, and we want to make sure that the public is safe. However, the, the improvements that they're planning to stabilize this building are very significant. We're talking about a proposed micropile grid. Now, these micropiles are supposedly gonna go down 25 feet into bedrock, uh, and it's gonna be a, a concrete column, and there's gonna be cement uh grid structure above that. That's a very significant structure, and we want to know what are the environmental impacts and, and, and what exactly is that? Um, we'd like to know what these impacts on the ecosystem as well are gonna be. We think those impacts have not been analyzed at all. Um, where I also want to know, is this proposed micropile grid the only proposed solution that will work here? Is there possibly a less invasive way to do it? Uh, we've heard a number of times, um, that, that this building is supposed to be moved or dismantled or, or removed. Well, is there a less invasive way to stabilize this building just so we can do that? And finally, um, we, we need some information on how these micropiles are gonna be removed once this building is gone. I mean, 25 feet down in the shoreline into bedrock, I think it's gonna be very hard to remove those micropiles. What's the cost gonna be? Is it gonna, are they setting aside funds to remove those micropiles later? Or are they planning on abandoning those in place? That's all information we think is critical for the commission to, to rule on this appeal, as well as make any necessary new conditions. Next, excuse me, we want to talk about the timeline for removing the subs, the structures. As, as has been noted, they, they pose a public threat. Um, the department's previous, previous conditions, as well as the conditions uh in the existing permits uh really state that there, this, this stabilization is so that Building F can be removed. Um, however, we've seen some other comments in the newspaper, as, as was noted in our, in our uh briefs, where the A O A president is saying they have no really intention of putting all this money into the stabilization and then demolishing the building. So we think we need some understanding of what their timelines really are. Um, how long will this actually take? Additionally, do they have the financial means to actually remove this building? We think all this information is really critical so that the commission, again, can make an informed decision, as well as they can apply the appropriate conditions to any, any permits that actually go forward. Finally, or not finally, but next, we want to talk about how can we hold the A O A O accountable? This, this, this area of discovery is really gonna help us hone in on, 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 on what, what are our options for, for um holding the A O A accountable? Uh, Kahana Sunset unfortunately has a record of non-compliance with previous permitting uh that has been done for this. Whether that be taking forever to produce the um, the managed retreat plan, or, or, or not actually getting a, a certified shoreline when they say they were gonna do, all of these things should have been done under previous permits, and, and we think that, that we need discovery on why that wasn't done. Um, additionally, we need to understand how Maui Planning Department, how they intend to enforce the previous conditions, as well as any new conditions that are, that are gonna be put on these uh permits. We think that's one of the problems here is, is that every time they bring these, come for these emergency permits, they put these conditions on them, and then Kahana Sunset apparently just chooses and picks which ones they want to follow and ignores the rest. And there's really no enforcement ability for Maui Planning Department to, to, to really put a check and balance on that. So we think we need discovery on those matters so we can address them, and so you folks can address them when you're crafting uh related conditions. And then finally, just briefly, there is this issue of the Maui Planning Department's analysis. You know, this work was previously brought in 2020 as a new seawall, and then in 2022, they, they bring it as a repair, virtually changing nothing. This is a really inconsistent analysis by the planning department, and we think we need some discovery at the planning department to see how that happened, and, and why that happened, and, and who, who approved that change? Because there virtually was no changes between the 2020 new seawall and the 2022 repair that they're, they're uh seeking to go forward with. Uh, I'm gonna save the rest of my time for rebuttal. Um, I have just a brief rebuttal, but I'll save it for that. So thank you, uh Chair and Members of the Commission for hearing us out. We really think this is an important matter.
Thank you very much.
You could have questions after the round. After hearing from them, make an idea of the question.
Okay, um, applicant, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, Cal Chipchase. You know, the, the fishing analogy exists because the idea behind it is that you don't know what you're gonna get, you're just hoping to catch something, right? You're putting bait out there, and you're hoping that you catch something. That's exactly what council summarized they're doing. They don't know what they're gonna catch, they don't know what they're gonna get, they're just hoping it's something. And they're hoping it's something that's useful for them. That's not the purpose of discovery in court, and it's certainly not the purpose of discovery in a planning commission proceeding, where discovery is not even allowed by right. It's discretionary. It's only allowed where relevant, and where it won't unduly delay the proceedings. If we look at what they've put forward in their amended motion, it is not a narrow set of requests. In fact, they don't have any specific requests at all. They have categories. Council summarized them as four, but if you actually look at the subcategories to those four, there are 14. 14 categories of information sought, no specific requests. So we have no idea how many specific requests, interrogatories and document requests, subpoenas, those 14 categories will spawn. We could be dealing with 60 interrogatories, we could be dealing with 20 document requests, we could be dealing with 20 subpoenas. We don't know, because even after given the chance, and even after being told, be specific, put out your requests. We have to approve or reject specific requests. They didn't do that. They came back instead, it's 14 categories. And as they say in their motion, if you read it, and as they said today in the argument, goes so far beyond what this appeal is actually about. The appeal from approvals for emergency repairs and exemptions related to two buildings, that's it. There are a couple of telling things in their reply that bear that out. The first is at page three, the second paragraph, where they open, "While the appeal itself focuses on exemptions for emergency repairs." That's it. That's everything. The appeal itself focuses on exemptions for emergency repairs. That is what is before you. That is all that is before you. Nothing else, and nothing they've proffered in their papers or today, is relevant to those issues. They know that, and so then they go on in the next paragraph to say, "The specific circumstances surrounding the shoreline hardening and the long-term management of the coastal environment necessitate," in their words here, "an expansive view of discovery." We know this appeal is only about these two issues, an appeal from these approvals, but we think we want an expansive view of discovery. There are 14 categories where we're gonna go fishing and hope that we come up with the information. A lot of the information that they want, that they say they need, is publicly available, as they acknowledge. And so they address that down at the bottom of the same page. They say, "Despite being publicly available, these documents should still be provided through discovery, as relying on public requests could unnecessarily delay the proceedings." The appeal was initially initiated in July of 2023. We are 16 months from the initiation of this appeal. If they wanted these public records, they've had already 16 months to get them. They have another two months before the hearing begins. If there's any delay, the delay is on them. They don't get to refuse to do what they could do, if there are indeed public documents that they could get that they need for this hearing, and instead put the burden on Kahana Sunset and the county to provide them through these 14 categories spawning an unknown number of actual requests for interrogatories, documents, and subpoenas. The category they acknowledge is not publicly available, relate to the identities of the individual owners of Kahana Sunset, to voting records, to meeting, meeting minutes of internal Kahana Sunset documents. Beyond the obvious lack of relevance in this proceeding, there are obviously privacy concerns producing to them in this proceeding for use in a planning commission matter involving two appeals, the individual owner's identities, their individual voting records, their meeting minutes and internal discussions. All of this collectively threatens to turn what is a very narrow, however important, narrow planning commission proceeding from a contested case into an outright circus. Their request should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Billberry?
I really don't have anything to add. The only thing I would point out is, um, we did get a public records request from the plaintiffs, or the, the interveners, lawyers, uh, some time ago, I think before this appeal was initiated, and they were produced, like, I think, 150 pages of communications from the department, so there's that, they have that. Um, otherwise, I would just join Mr. Chipchase's arguments, and as I indicated in our uh opposition to this motion, uh, as well, they've had months to, to do this, and they haven't done anything. They could have given you specific requests, and that would have made this a lot easier, but I agree that the requests are broad and vague and uh are just gonna draw this process out. There's no way we would get to a hearing on January 14th, given everything they're asking for. It's just more delay.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley?
Hi, Chair, thank you. Um, just a couple, um, couple points in rebuttal. Um, so first, uh, I believe Mr. Chipchase is misstating the discovery process that we, we've discussed a number of times here. Mr. Hopper has, has, has at length gone through it, and I know Mr. Chipchase is aware of it because we've done it in three or four contested case hearings before. He's right, that uh the Maui Planning Commission rules discovery is not a right, it's something that we have to request, and that's what we're doing here. We're requesting to, to do rediscover, discovery on these very specific categories, at which point, if we're, if, if that is approved, we will fall back, we will present again our discovery requests. Now, the idea that, that this could spawn all these, any number of things is just silly, it's nonsensical, right? You folks can limit it. You can say, hey, you can have such and such time, you can say you're allowed to give 30, 30 rogues, 30 requests for information. Um, you, you can limit the categories of stuff we're, we're requesting. The reality of it is, is, you know, a lot of folks, including folks in this meeting today, we're putting a lot of onus on this being handled at the circuit court level. We went up there, we got fought up there, they dismissed it down here, and now we're handling it at the agency level. This information is critical to understanding how we proceed. Um, so next, I want to address this idea that, that, that public information shouldn't be produced during discovery. Mr. Chipchase and Mr. Billberry are well aware of the issues that are associated with getting this information via UIPA requests or, or Freedom of Information requests. Most times, almost always, the agency immediately responds back and says, "We're gonna need to get a dead, uh, extend the deadline to respond to this." Many times, they will respond back and say, "We're gonna charge you thousands of dollars to produce these documents." It's really a tactic to prevent that information from getting out. Now that we are in the middle of a contested case hearing, discovery is allowed, and this is the kind of information that they should be forced to give over if you folks think it's appropriate. The information we're requesting is very appropriate, and, and, you know, this really isn't about us, folks, this is about the beach, this is about the community. This is making sure that you folks have the necessary information to ensure that the community has a right to access this beach, which is quickly, quickly disappearing, right? These hardened structures are quickly disappearing this beach, and there's gonna be nothing left, right? Um, I, I also want to address this issue that, that is solely focused on this, this, this one permit. You folks have the ability to add conditions to any permit at any time. We think that's probably what's gonna need to happen here. You know, and this is also, these emergency permits and focusing on these emergency permits, this is how Kahana Sunset has gotten away with kicking this can down the road for 30 years. We believe, and I, I thought others agree with us, that this was the time to do it. There may be enough time to do this discovery before January. Um, if not, we're happy to continue this on, but let's get the necessary information, and let's make this case happen. Make this the, the, the place where we get all the information out there. I did want to just note, give me one second. Um, sorry, did you folks get our reply brief? I don't believe it was posted, but I want to make sure that the reply, that you folks got our, got our reply brief that was filed on I don't believe it was posted, but I want to make sure that you folks got our reply brief that was filed on Friday.
Bear in mind, the emails wasn't working until today, so.
So I just want to note that we did file a reply brief as was anticipated on Friday. And you folks can look for that.
Do you know what time, what time that was submitted?
It was before 4:30. I know that we made sure to get it in before 4:30. Sorry. Are you guys waiting on me? I apologize, I can't see very well. Do you want me to continue?
Just taking one moment to check our inbox for testimony. Unfortunately, our email was out from Friday to today due to a change in our software going from Groupwise to Microsoft. So we're just taking a look. Thank you.
Once we find that, I think we can take a few minutes to enable all the commissioners to review that.
I was good to take the break and read it. Questions and stuff, but I just need to read it before we make a decision on it.
I think you can finish.
Okay. Mr. Hurley, you can, yes, finish your rebuttal. And then, once we find the document, we will give time for everybody to review it.
No worries, Chair. Thank you. So I'm just going to finish. You know, in our rebuttal, we talked about, and I'm going to read, I'm going to quote it here. And in our rebuttal, we kind of talked about the importance of why we needed some of this information relating to the owners. Well, in the managed retreat plan that Kahana Sunset finally produced after years, they state, "Kahana Sunset will need more time to address issues and concerns from individual unit owners and lien holders to help them understand and gain support for retreat." And then furthermore, under the bylaws, the AOA would require approval from each affected unit owner in order to demolish the structure, including building F. Changing the bylaws requires 100% of unit owners and lien holders to vote with a 75% of approval. So, again, it's apparent to us that without getting the individual unit owners involved, it's going to be virtually impossible to come up with a solution in which Kahana Sunset can agree to demolish these buildings, which has been required. And we believe what the most recent permit was actually put in place for, to stabilize the building so that it could be removed. And so this, again, just highlights the need. We're not, we're not searching to harass or target individual unit owners, but this information is necessary and the internal communications and how they voted is necessary so that we can understand what they're really thinking. Again, as we note in our reply, that the AOA president is on the record saying they do not intend to destroy this building if they put all this money into it. So that's why those internal records are so important. That's why we need the ability to know what they're thinking and what's going on. So I will leave it there, Chair. And I encourage you folks to read our reply if you guys can get it, because it does have some valuable information in it. I think I covered it all. And again, you folks are welcome to put conditions on discovery, limit time, limit number of rogues that you think are necessary, even whittle down on the areas that you think we done. I believe that's exactly what happened in the YLA 670 contested case, or you folks kind of whittled it down to what you thought was necessary. So again, thank you for the time. I encourage you folks to see this as an opportunity for you to get the information that you folks are going to need to make this decision. It's critically important. And really, a lot of Maui Shoreline is going to rest on this decision that you folks make. So thank you for giving the time it needs. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. We will save questions from the commission until we are able to review this document we were looking for. Okay, staff is going to post it on the link on the agenda? Okay. Wonderful. Welcome back, everybody, to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 12th, 2024. Commissioners, have you all had a chance to review the reply from the appellant? I see nods and thumbs up from everybody. Okay, wonderful. Now let us go into questions from the commission for any of the parties. Who would like to go first?
Start.
Okay, Commissioner Kailaha.
I'm not quite sure what kind of questions I'm... Well. I guess, okay, with the recent document that we just received, that was very helpful. I'm sorry, I appreciate. I appreciate the explanations in here. Actually, the only one that I'm unclear about is the last one, the unit owner's contact information. Like, I don't, I guess I'm not clear on the relevance of that information for the purpose of what we're moving into. Like, if you could try to clarify that for me.
Yeah, I assume that's for me. Thank you very much, Commissioner Ryan Hurley, again. So that goes back to kind of what we were trying to ascertain. And initially, we were assuming we might have to depose unit owners and/or try to get the information on what it would take for them to actually assent to removing the building, right? We're trying to get around this, this, what we've learned through the managed retreat plan and since then, is that there appears to be this internal structure with the bylaws of the AOA and how they have that set up, where it's going to be very challenging, given that all the owners need to consent to that. So that was our initial was, A, we need to know who exactly owns the building. And we were initially thinking we need to oppose him. That might not be necessary if we can get a hold, if the AOA will commit to presenting an owner's representative that has the ability to enter into binding agreements, such that the commission can actually put something out there to enforce it. I mean, really, what we're trying to prevent here is the commission saying, yes, stabilize this building so it can be removed, but the AOA having no ability to remove that. So the other thought we were thinking was is maybe, maybe given the challenge with this, the individual owners of the affected building, maybe they need to be involved in the actual permit, need to be listed in the permit, so that there can be some accountability. Again, right, we know these are pretty much all vacation rentals and a lot of these people live out of state. We're trying to get down to the way that, hey, how is the commission actually going to enforce anything that goes on with it? So that, just to try to summarize, that is why we're going after that information, going after that information of the individual unit owners is. It really isn't that we want to, we just, there's no other way for us to understand what's going on and how we can actually get them to assent to removing building F at least.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions from the commission? Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. My question is actually, I guess, to Corp Counsel. Is... What exactly are we supposed to be reviewing and approving or not approving?
Yeah, you've just read my mind. Seriously.
Wait, are you, which?
Oh, I thought you were talking to me.
Well, I could ask you too, but I was good.
Okay. Mr. Hopper.
Mr. Hopper, I just want to make sure that I understand clearly what we're supposed to be making a decision on.
Okay. Yeah, we can go over this. The rule in your rules of practice and procedure is 1220167. It's called discovery. And it says, "The parties to a contested case may request discovery in a manner consistent with the provisions of rules." And it states several rules of civil procedure, which are court rules. Those are Hawaii rules of civil procedure that involve something called discovery. Discovery is a process that can be used prior to the actual hearing or trial that can allow parties to obtain information from other parties or other sources that they believe would be relevant to the case. This says, after that rule, it says, "They may request discovery in a manner consistent with the rules." And then it says, "The hearing officer," so that's the commission in this case, "will allow utilization of the discovery process where appropriate and where such would not unreasonably delay the proceedings." In court proceedings, there's a right to discovery. It can be limited and narrowed depending on relevance, and so it's not overly burdensome, but there's a right to it. In your contested case proceedings here, it's entirely at your discretion. So there's, it can be allowed or not allowed. And the forms of discovery that I think are being discussed now are interrogatories, which are written questions to parties, that there's a time for response and that those are asked and answered. There's also document requests, which says we want you to produce the following documents, and potentially a site visit request for the commission, and potential subpoenas to require witnesses to appear. So those are sort of the categories that have been discussed here by the parties. This is entirely at your discretion. You can allow this or not allow this, depending on sort of the party's arguments. And that's where we're at. So there's a motion for, to allow discovery and responses from the parties on that. So you get to decide this. Now, discovery, if something is allowed or not allowed during discovery, that doesn't limit the right of parties to present their case through what's already been scheduled, a time for the parties to submit witness lists and exhibit lists. So the parties are allowed to present exhibits. So, you know, documents that they believe are relevant as evidence to you and call witnesses that they believe are important to call before you. Discovery may add additional potential exhibits to parties. But, for example, if there's an application that's already submitted and, you know, part of the appeal, that could be something that could be set forth as evidence. But if there's documents that aren't available, they, you know, wouldn't necessarily have them at this point. So that's, that's an option of the commission. The commission certainly can allow or disallow and can narrow discovery. So if you think you want to narrow it to only certain, certain types of things or certain numbers of interrogatories or document requests, you can look at doing something like that. So that's sort of, that's a request that's been made to you and a decision that you can make after hearing from the parties on which you would or would not allow through that process. And again, parties, if there's no discovery or some discovery, that, that still doesn't change the ultimate process of you're going to have the party submit a witness and exhibit list and have a contested case hearing here before you. So the party will do an opening statement, call witnesses. The other party will be allowed to cross-examine those witnesses. They'll be able to submit evidence. And all the parties will have the chance to present their witnesses and their evidence and cross-examine the other party's witnesses. So that's what's coming. This is a pre-hearing conference to sort of try to simplify those issues.
Thank you. And just to clarify for myself again, sorry, just learning, I want to make sure I'm doing all the right stuff, is we're evaluating if the decision by the planning director at the time, that's what we're determining. We're not determining anything else. It's just if the decision by the planning commissioner, I mean, so the planning department, correct?
Yeah, you can, you can hear the party's arguments on this to an extent, but there's, there's a couple of approvals here. There are two different appeals that have been consolidated. One was the shoreline setback approval and SMA exemption. The other was the issuance of a SMA emergency permit. And there's been appeals of those decisions, which is a right of, you know, the appellant's to challenge those. And they are going to, I know they've asserted various reasons why those were improper. And so that's going to be the issues discussed, whether you are going to uphold the director's decision on those permits or approvals or rule that there was an error made such that you can potentially invalidate those approvals. Thank you.
Got it? Thank you.
I did have a follow-up question for Corp Counsel.
Commissioner Kailaha.
So this is the first time we've actually, like, evaluated whether the planning department has, you know, issued a permit correctly. And so I just want to... What are the, what are the, what happens if we, if we were to say hypothetically that, you know, the permits shouldn't have been issued? What happens after that? Like, are there repercussions to the planning department? Are there, what happens to the applicants? Like, what are the habits after that?
I don't necessarily want to go over all of the possible issues, but what I can do is try to... We actually, I need to get a copy of the previous SMA rules in order to more thoroughly go over this, because the newer rules, which are no longer valid at this point, are the ones available. But in general, a director decision can be overturned by the commission if there are some criteria met. I can get you those criteria, but essentially, there's going to be the burden on the appellant's to show that there was a problem with the director's decision. I think the criteria are substantially similar to the current, the current rules. Yeah, it's essentially, I don't think this was changed at all in the new rules, but it goes over, "On an appeal, the commission may affirm the decision of the director or may remand the case to the hearing officer, if any, with instructions for further proceedings, or it may modify the decision of the director if the substantial rights of the appellant may have been prejudiced because the decision is, one, based on a clearly erroneous finding of material fact or erroneous application of the law, or, two, arbitrary or capricious in its application, or, three, a clearly unwarranted abuse of discretion." So that's what you're looking at on generally an appeal. And I apologize if this is, yeah, I think these are... Yeah, these, I think, are current rules. And so I believe that's the standard we're looking at. That's not necessarily completely relevant for the discovery portion, but I can see where you're going with trying to figure out what the decision making is going to be. So that's sort of going to be your criteria for these two, really three, but these two consolidated appeals. You're going to be looking at that. The appellants are going to have to show that those were improperly issued and the parties will have to argue on that. And you'll be able to, you're going to hear, it's going to essentially be a trial, like a mini-trial before you, where you're going to have to make the decision based on the evidence presented to you on that.
Further questions from the commission? Not for Corp Counsel, for any of the parties? Vice Chair?
Sure. Mr. Hopper, could you give me those three criteria again? I'll just read the whole rule again. "The commission may affirm the decision of the director or may remand the case to the hearing officer, if any, with instructions for further proceedings, or it may modify the decision of the director if the substantial rights of the appellant may have been prejudiced because the decision is, one, based on a clearly erroneous finding of material fact or erroneous application of the law, or, two, arbitrary or capricious in its application, or, three, a clearly unwarranted abuse of discretion." Thank you.
Additional questions from the commission? For any of the parties? Okay, I have a question for Mr. Hurley. So we heard from Mr. Billbury that there was a request for documents submitted some time ago and you received about 150 pages worth of documents. Can you tell us what was in there and what more beyond that specifically you are looking for?
Chair, great question. Thank you for, Ryan Hurley here again on behalf of appellants. I don't have that UIPA response in front of me, but as has been noted, this has been going on for 30-plus years and there's been a number of permits, a number of correspondence. It's clearly going to be well more than 100, 150 pages. And then I'd also note, just since then, right, that the county has notified us that there's been these ongoing discussions with DLNR. there's been these ongoing discussions with DLNR, right? DLNR has told, apparently told the county, hey, we're not going to be able to certify the shoreline, we're not going to do all this, they're planning, those are information, those are communications that need to be presented. We're not even up to date on the actual ongoing facts of what's going on between the county and DLNR. We think that's very relevant. Also, again, right, it's our belief that this project was previously denied, 2021, this was denied, and it's virtually the same project brought forward again with the same exact thing. What has changed, right? We need to understand that. And that's not, none of that information is really included in those documents provided, that 150 pages of documents. Why did they approve in 2023 when they previously denied it? Just those are the initial things that have come to mind.
Okay. Do you have both of the applications and these November 2020 construction plans?
Yeah, I don't have them up with me, but yes, and it's my belief that the construction documents are virtually the same for the previous project and the most recent project. And that, again, is, I think, one of the key points we're trying to understand. How was this previous new seawall, where the construction projects, the construction documents themselves have not changed? There was a previous new seawall, now it's a repair, and why was it disallowed in 2021, and now all of a sudden 2023 it's approved? Right? That's exactly, that highlights why we need more documents and what we need to get at.
Okay, but you have both of those documents.
Not up with me, but I could tell you, I'll pull them up shortly, but we've been through most of them.
I don't need you to pull them up, I just need to know that you have them.
Yes, we do have them, and that's, again, the issue we're trying to sort out, is virtually they're the same documents, one approved, one not approved. What's the difference? We need that information, I think, and I think the commission needs that information to make sure that that decision by the director wasn't, as Mr. Hopper noted, wasn't arbitrary and capricious, right? Wasn't just made for no reason, right? Why did they change their mind?
There's also been a lot of reference in all of these back and forths to a January 14, 2022 letter from the department to the applicant about their previous application being negatively assessed. Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah, yes, we do have a copy of that. Again, not in front of me, I'm pulling that stuff up when I'm not, but yes.
I just need to know that you have it.
We do have a copy of that, absolutely. Chair.
Any other questions from the commission? Otherwise, we can, yeah, otherwise, if there's no further questions or discussion, we can entertain a motion.
Reminder, we would need five votes in order for a motion to pass. And the, I believe we have the other items scheduled in this already, and I think we can work with staff to get a letter out to that effect. I think you took action to set those dates at the last meeting, but this discovery item is one of the last items to deal with, and it could potentially affect the other schedule depending on what you want to do. So I don't want to say you're not going to touch those other dates, but that, this is sort of the remaining item here.
Thank you.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to deny that additional information. That's all I had right now.
Deny that motion for discovery?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Hipo Lito, is that a second?
Second for a discussion.
Okay, second for a discussion. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure. This was an emergency permit, that's why it changed, and sweat conditions there, they're taking the building out. Seems like this is just a lot of delay, unnecessary. The old planning director, it wasn't capricious or arbitrary, it wasn't.
Hold on, we're not deliberating on the merits
Fair enough.
of the appeal, it's just specifically for the discovery motion.
Yeah, let's deny this and get forward with this.
Okay.
For next.
Commissioner Hipo Lito, speak to the second.
One more to add, Chair.
Okay. Discussion from the commission. Commissioner Kehloha.
Yeah, I actually feel like some of the documents would be helpful in helping me to understand why the former director approved emergency and exemption permit, so I won't be supporting the motion, but I would, could I say why? A motion that I wouldn't support? I guess I, I feel like there are certain documents in here that would be helpful for me, but certainly I would support a cap on that.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. I'm struggling in trying to figure out where I land on this, because to me, it seems that documents that are being requested are not necessarily germane to the decision that we're supposed to be making. But it does open questions in my mind as to other things, so I'm trying to separate those two things, so that's where I'm kind of trying to balance the act, because I think some of the information would be interesting, useful, but I don't know if it's relevant to the decision that we need to make. So that's, I just need a little time to process.
Sure, yes, yes. And so I guess fleshing this out a little bit more, so we are ultimately needing to decide, was the director correct or in error in issuing the exemptions, or, well, yes, exemptions and approvals for what was granted? And so what do we need to confirm or deny? And it's not necessarily, you know, the conditions that were or were not imposed, it's whether, it's the decision made by the director, yeah.
So, I guess, in my mind, Chair, that some of the questions that are being asked about, is the building going to be not removed? I think they're all great questions, but again, that's where I'm saying, I don't believe that is germane to what our decision is supposed to be. So that's kind of the struggle. I think it's a valid question, say, what's going to happen?
Yes.
But I don't see the correlation to what the decision is that we're making.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and there's like a whole bunch of conditions I'm trying to find them, because as Mr. Hopper pointed out, there's like the new rules and then the old rules and finding the link to the old.
Oh, yes.
But like, things like, you know, could this project have environmental impacts? Like, documentation about environmental impacts would be really helpful, whether I can see, like, oh yeah, well, were alternatives explored? That should be, like, I feel like a relevant, that would help me understand why.
Yeah, so I think part of it is, like, what information did the director base their decision on? And if the information the director had at hand for basing their decision was not, did not, like, fully cover all of those considerations, then that may be something that weighs in on our decision on whether the director was correct or not. So some of this stuff, I think, should have been perhaps in the application, for instance, as part of the record for the director, because the director's not supposed to base their decision on anything outside of, you know, what is in the application before them. So if there was stuff that should have been in the application and considered that was not, then maybe that helps us make our decision. But like, we are not reviewing the project. That makes sense.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the director can only make a decision based on what the director has in front of them, so not all of these.
Yeah, so in a sense, you know, like, was the application complete? Maybe.
There's also potentially, so each rule has a criteria for it, so you'll be looking at the criteria in those rules, the appellant's will have to argue why they weren't met with the application, and then you'll have to hear from the other parties as to why, you know, if their argument is that, that it was sufficient, and, you know, I think that's where you're going to end up on your discussions there. For further SMA exemption, there could be the issue of if it may have an adverse environmental or ecological effect, you know, the item being exempted. I mean, the parties are going to have to show you that here's, here's the permit criteria, here's why the criteria was met or was not met, and why the decision of the director was met the appeal criteria or did not meet the appeal criteria. And if you find that the criteria on the appeal, that it was either of those, you know, items, there was a problem with the decision, you can overturn. But yeah, I think that's going to be, you're going to be looking at it, you're not necessarily looking at it as, as a starting permit approval, because the decisions were already made under your rules, but you do have the authority to, if someone requests it, review that action and decide if it was a proper action.
Yeah, so the director doesn't make a decision only based on the application, right? Because the director also may visit site, for example? Like, how does a director make a decision, Kate?
Well, I don't want to go into that, because we're at a contested case now. These are all issues, I think, that you can discuss through this proceeding. Those are, I think, very good questions you could be asking, you know, witnesses in this proceeding. If you want to allow discovery on issues that you believe will help you to make these decisions, then you can certainly allow that discovery on it. But, yeah, the parties are going to have to put together their cases on, you know, supporting their arguments here. If there's an appeal filed, and I'm sure there'll be, you know, witness and exhibit lists filed, then you're going to hear opening statements from the parties as to why these were or were not properly granted. But that's to come. You're sort of deciding today what the applicant, or the appellant's have said, we believe we need additional areas of discovery, and you're sort of deciding what you think would be, you know, what would be proper for them to look into. And again, you need five votes on this, and if you don't get the five votes, there's not an action on this. And so you have to discuss alternatives such as deferring this decision, allowing someone else to make the decision, if it's, you want to delegate it to the chair or something, I'm not sure if she would even want you doing that, but that's, it's happened in the past, but this is, I'm not saying that's a proper thing to do, I'm saying there's potential options if you can't get five votes. But, yeah, in order to grant or deny a motion, you need a majority to which the commission's entitled, which would be five in this case.
Yeah, and, yeah, so the question is, you know, was the director in compliance with our SMA and shoreline rules that were in place at the time, and therefore with 205A? So do we have the information at hand to be able to make that decision?
You could also ask the question, if you think there's, as I think Commissioner Kehloha mentioned, if you believe there is, you want to narrow the scope, you can also do that too. If you want to say you allow some of the discovery, but not everything that was requested, you could also consider that. But that's ultimately at your discretion, as the commission's discretion.
Yeah, so we can take all or none, or some.
Yeah, I guess for me, I didn't feel like there was a good justification for the unit owner's contact information, for example.
Okay, well, it sounds like we should go through with the vote on the motion on the table and then figure out a new motion after this. So we'll call for the vote on this one. Commissioner Hipo Lito.
Aye.
Commissioner Kehloha.
No.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Chair Thayer.
Um, no.
The vote is three to two, fails. Okay, we will entertain a new motion.
I move to, I guess, how about put this another way? Is there information that you will need to be able to make a decision on whether the director's decision was proper? Yeah. I am going through the many documents that I have opened up on my computer and trying to find the one where she notes.
Well, I guess noting, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Hopper.
Just a suggestion, I don't want to be putting my foot in my mouth here, but I don't know if the parties have any thoughts on helping the commission to move this thing forward, if there's any sort of sets of either documents or discovery that we're okay with providing that can move things along here, because you can see the issue the commission's having. If we need the commission to come to a decision with five votes, that's fine, we can continue to do this. But I don't know if, Chair, it's helpful to ask the parties, maybe there is some degree of these discovery requests that we can hopefully agree to, to move forward with, just as a thought, because you see where we're at right now. So I don't know if it's worth asking the applicants this, along with the interveners and the county, but maybe that's a consideration here.
Yeah, I think I'd like to find out from Commissioner Kehloha what she thinks she needs, and then we'll see if the parties have this.
So I think, like, the first and obvious one would be discussions around alternatives to stabilization. That makes sense to me because of, it has, like, you've explored other options, and then anything around potential environmental impacts. I don't know what that looks like in a document, I guess, is that, does that extend, yeah?
Like, beyond what would have been in the application?
Yeah, like, if there were... Yeah, I'm struggling because I... I'm struggling with the same question that Commissioner Ward has, I think I'm getting them jumbled together.
In a sense, I'm thinking, you know, if there's information that was relevant to the project, to understand the full scope and impact of the project, that was not included in the application, then I think that would imply that the decision was not made on, like, the full, like, scope and impact of the project, which would then lead us to a certain decision.
Yeah, so does that include things like meetings, minutes, and decision-making within the AOAO? That's where I'm kind of a little bit getting blurry.
Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. And that's where I was trying, I'm trying to separate, because the decisions of what the AOAO made or didn't make aren't necessarily germane to the decision that the director made.
No.
Because the director's going to look at what they have in front of them, make that decision, what they've done in their meetings and decisions in that process may not have been appropriate, but it's not going to have a direct connection to the decision that the director made. At least, that's how I'm processing it. So if I'm incorrect, somebody please correct me.
And I guess in an analogy, you know, if this was, say, a single person applying for this versus an AOAO, would there be this question to the person to say, when you were mulling over this project in your head, did you consider all of these things? Which if they did, if that's leading to the director's decision, then it's got to be somewhere on paper for the director to consider. But if that wasn't there within the application document... the application documents submitted to the director, then their decision didn't or shouldn't have taken that into account.
And I guess I'm wondering if there are other resources that are used other than just an application, like there must, I would imagine people communicate in other ways to understand information in more detail beyond just what is in an application, I guess, that's. Yeah. That's where I
Parties, I don't know how you want to do it. Seems to be sort of a disagreement on a set of documents that folks find are relevant. You might be at an impasse if you want to find them, for sure.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, certainly try to resolve it, or else, those are my ideas for going forward. But sometimes you might not just be able to.
Yes, so I guess to me, like, some of the items in here should be part of an application document. And if they are being
left out.
Left out. Then maybe that means the application was not complete, which means that has implications for the decision.
Let's not go by
But that's getting to
the ultimate merit.
Future thing, yes.
We're just going to get the relevance of the discovery request now.
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean.
So any information related to other options that have been explored other than what, like, all, any information relative to alternatives to stabilization? To me, that would be helpful information.
To decide whether the director was correct.
Thorough, yeah, whether the application was thorough, or whether or not, I guess, more information should have been requested.
But we are gonna
Get that.
We, yes, so I believe we can confirm this with the appellant's. But we would have the application documents that were submitted by the applicant to the director as part of our record to consider whether the director was correct.
I kind of feel like we're almost putting the cart before the horse, because we haven't seen the documents to determine if there's information that we think is missing, so.
Okay.
That's how I'm kind of seeing it, at least, is I think they're requesting documents that we may or may not have, that could be there. We just don't know because we haven't received it yet. It's kind of how I'm processing.
Okay.
That.
Yeah.
So we could potentially, when we go into the case, need to request additional documents, which may or may not fall into some of these categories.
Mm-hmm.
Is that an accurate statement?
I think so.
Well, you wouldn't necessarily go into discovery after you've started the contested case hearing. But if there's information the commission wants from one of the parties, they can ask those questions to the parties and request that they produce that information. It's not sort of the same as the discovery, and I think, you know, appellants believe they they have specific things that, and they're not going to know if you're going to want them. And they're saying they want to have them because they believe they're relevant to showing in their cases. It's true that if you get into a case and you need questions answered, you can request that parties, you know, produce something that you believe is relevant. It's not the same as a discovery process, so if you think that there are, it's important to allow discovery, you should do that now, I'd say. But it is true that not doing discovery now doesn't restrict your ability to ask whatever questions you want at the hearing, or say, you know, have certainly publicly available documents produced to you as far as, you know, subpoenas and things like that, or, you know, asking for documents that are not publicly available, that can be more difficult. But, you know, there will be, there will still have to be hearing on this, whether or not discovery is part of that.
Yeah, so I think per Mr. Hopper's advice, you can ask the parties, party or parties, if they have specific items or can furnish specific items that you would need.
Yeah. Can I ask a question while Mr. Hurley?
Yes, hi, thank you.
Yeah. So I guess in my mind, I'm struggling still with the question of what beyond the application does their director use, like, what beyond the application, which is what I imagine the director uses to make the the majority of what the director uses to make their decision, can you tell me how? I'm trying to formulate my question. Like, what, how do these other documents, how, can you tell me how these other documents, how these other documents would be used in the director's decision to issue these permits? And like, can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, that great question. And, you know, I just want to thank everybody for taking the time to really work through this, because we do think this is an important matter, and I appreciate you folks really talking this out. The first thing I want to say is, is we do not have the applications. The applications, at least in my records, have not been provided. We do think, just as you folks have spoken, that is critical information that we anticipate will be filed, should be provided during discovery. If you look through our notice of appeal, I know people have talked about how extensively long it is and hundreds of pages. What's not in there is the actual applications, because we don't have that information yet. I don't have the UIPA request in front of me to see if it would have been scooped up in that, but we do not believe to have that. So we think the first thing we want is actually what the director made these decisions on. What we have are the approvals and the actual permits and the staff report. We do not have the actual application. So first thing is, is we think that's a critical piece of information. Also, we think these internal discussions with the staff. As we've noted, this permit was initially brought as a new seawall, and then it was brought as, under the same construction documents as a repair. What was the internal discussion that happened at the planning department that allowed that change to happen, right? It was denied as a new seawall, but it was approved as a repair. Doesn't appear to be any new construction documents, the same, in essence, project. We think those internal communications are really relevant. I think in regards to the, again, I get the issue with the AOA personal contact information. Of course, we would be willing to do that any number of ways, but the reality is, is we need to understand what communications the director have with them and what was the internal thinking? Is the board talking about something different than they're telling the commission, right? We think that based on the statements by the AOA president specifically, that they have no intentions of removing this building if they put a million dollars into stabilizing it. That kind of contradicts what we're hearing both here and other places. So we think those documents are really important. I would just note in terms of limiting, and, you know, the Hawaii Rules of Civil Procedure in terms of interrogatories, they say we can do up to sixty interrogatories. Maybe we could limit it to thirty and keep it as small as possible. I can assure you folks that no one has, wants to see this go any faster than us. We want this building and the safety hazard removed. We want access back to the beach. So this idea that we're just trying to delay things is just nonsensical here, folks. We really need to get to the heart of this, and we want to make sure that you folks have the right decision. This is a big one. I think that covers most of them. Also, I did want to note out, you know, the subpoenas, we did list two people to subpoena, and they were both the previous director and who we believe is the person, the staff planner involved in this. You know, we could, we're happy to work with the county, but we need assurances that those people will be available to testify at this hearing, right? That's the other thing, is so much of this is based on the knowledge of the director and why they came to the decision. If we don't have the ability to actually make them show up, who's going to say they're going to show up? And is that again going to deprive you folks of that information? You know, the reality is, is we think that the four, that the areas of scope limited in our requests are limited enough, and we think they're pretty relevant when you really think about it. I also wanted to note, as, you know, Mr. Hopper noted, the commission has the ability to modify this decision, right? And so we want to make sure you folks have that information, so that if you do modify the director's decision, you can do it appropriately, and you can put appropriate conditions that are actually enforceable in there. So that's why we're going after these documents. And again, we're happy to work with you folks to limit them, but we do think the documents we listed in our motion are very relevant, and they're not this, you know, they're not very extraneous. I mean, they hit the points, and they should, they should have been provided, and they should be provided now.
Thank you.
Sorry, I would just note that, you know, if the AOA just would agree to give us the documents, we don't need the discovery motion. They can agree to do that, and then we could follow up with you folks if they don't do that. But we just want the responsive documents so that we can make our case.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question for court counsel, but I hope it's quick. Is that same meeting, would we do the motion that Mr. Hurley mentioned to amend the permit? Would that happen at the same, okay, got it. So for me, I think what would
Yeah, we're not weighing in on the permit. We are weighing in on the director's decision.
Okay. For me, I think applications would be helpful in the motion to discovery. I think communications between director and AOAO are relevant.
I want to check and see. There's, it sounds like, I don't know if we can get some of this worked out, but it sounds like there was already a UIPA request and documents sent as a response. But we're saying the application and communications from within county staff about that, there's additional information that needs to be asked for that. I'm just hearing what the parties have said, so I don't want to say anything inaccurate. But we're saying the application and certain communications with staff are not part of that UIPA request or the responses. Do we know that at this point? I don't know if county or appellants know this, because if we're trying to narrow this down, if any of it's already been provided, great. If not yet, then, you know, we have to continue, but yeah.
The UIPA request is attached to our opposition to the motion. So if you have that, you can at least see what was requested.
But not all the responsive documents?
I don't believe I attach those, because
Right, that's a, yeah, right.
Give you a stat.
Yes.
But I don't know, I might have.
I mean, for appellants, I guess, the application was not one of the documents provided to you there?
Uh, no, it was not.
But you said you had the construction plans?
Yes. And just the UIPA was only for building F, not building A.
And you haven't submitted?
Oh, sorry, Chair.
Go ahead.
And the construction permits we got from MAPS, they weren't provided. A lot of the stuff was, we found online by other sources. They weren't actually provided by the county. And anticipating the next question, again, you know, we're trying to avoid utilizing, we think that there's a contested case going on. We should be able to utilize the contested case process to get discovery instead of doing UIPAs. As I noted before, they can always ask for extensions and charges fees, and then that's a whole nother fight that we have to have there. We prefer to handle this matter through the commission via the discovery process.
But you submitted a UIPA before you submitted the appeals? I think I heard Mr. Billbury say.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we were not in the contested case process, and we didn't have the ability to seek discovery at that time.
Okay, and you don't recall what you acquired through that?
I do, but I can, I mean, I don't, I, we could go through it, but I could tell you that not all, definitely not all the communications with the OA over there, if there are any. The applications were not included. And we got, but yeah. There was emails, but we think there's clearly some missing emails. It was just between Don, the consultant for the management tree plan in the department. Those are the only emails we got. The consultant that was doing the management tree plan. So we think there's a lot more emails out there. And then again, as I noted, it's by other parties' notice testimony at the other hearing, it's clear there's been another ongoing discussions with DLNR, where they've said pretty substantively, apparently, that they're not going to be able to certify the shoreline, which was one of the previous conditions. And so, yeah, that's the stuff we're trying to get at. You know, there's other, obviously been other ongoing communications that have happened since then, too.
So the request says all application materials related to Kohona Sunset Building F Foundation repairs. So I mean, I don't know if this is something we need to look at, but yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's this area the commission wants to explore as far as allowing discovery or otherwise, then you can discuss it. But that's what I'm reading in the request. But we don't have a record of the responsive documents that were given in those. So we don't, we don't have those before us yet.
And there was not a building A application request, right?
Well, based on what's attached here, it just says building F. And, but I don't want to confirm anything without knowing the full record there.
Would you like to formulate a motion? Or ask more questions?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Well, and yeah, I guess I'll start by saying I I move to allow.
Just, just a suggestion, there's several types of discovery, remember? There's interrogatories, which are like written questions. There's document requests, which are, provide us the documents listed. And then there's subpoenas, which they've identified two witnesses they would like to subpoena, or at least discuss with the county, making sure they're available, just to help formulate which your thoughts are. But there's different types of requests. We've been mostly talking about documents, but there's other requests as well.
Yeah. Terror, got.
Interrogatories, yes.
Subpoenas and document.
Yeah, requests for document production, you know, production of documents is what is one of the forms. And so you would potentially identify
The type.
The, well, yeah, from, you know, to whom, from appellants to whom, and, you know, the types of documents that are, that you would, you know, allow that discovery on. If you were, if that's something you're inclined to want to allow.
Okay, let me start, and then maybe I will amend if I need to. So I move to allow motion to discover, motion for discovery for documents, specifically the applications, which we are not clear on, applications related to building A and F. And then documents on communications between the director and AOAO specifically related to the permit request for building A and F.
Yeah, and then I would also just say separately, I'm not aware of anything that would, you can certainly allow discovery as to those items. I'm not aware of anything that would also not, if they're government records, I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit the appellants from doing a UIPA request for additional stuff in addition to what you're asking for. If you want to allow discovery only in certain areas, you could. If you want to allow us to any publicly available documents under UIPA, you could do that as the request. But the documents that you have identified, I think, would have to be made publicly available for the most part, unless they contain, you know, contain confidential information in any member of the public asking for the same things, too. So, yeah.
And so doing it this way just removes, like, having to pay money to get those documents?
That, that, and it also has the commission's enforcement authority if there's non-compliance. So that if they don't, if they don't respond in a timely manner, normally you would go to the Office of Information Practices or court to ask the documents be produced. In this case, they would be through the commission process. So you'd be violating a commission order potentially. Um, so that's, that's the, uh, that's sort of the difference. But, but they would generally be publicly available. So, yeah, I'm just noting that. That doesn't necessarily mean anything with respect to your, your, your decision. I'm just noting that that should hopefully be relatively smooth if you are asking for, for those documents.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't just make it publicly available documents then, what if, as long as those include the application and the communications between the director and A O A.
And that's communications by email and by letter? Any and all?
Well, I mean, you could perhaps allow the, the applicants. I mean, if you want to narrow it and be clear that you're not, you want to keep it on rails, you can, you can do that. But I mean, you know, the applicant or the appellants can make their request as, as long as they deal with publicly, you know, or, you know, documents that would be subject to U I P A production through the process. Um, you could, you could identify that and it would be up to them to, um, you know, decide how they want to phrase those, those document requests, unless you want to narrow it more. If you've got concerns with over, overly broad requests that are outside the scope of this, this hearing. But, um, yeah, so, uh, I, I, I would say that the discovery process can be more narrow than the U I P A process because the discovery process has to do with relevant evidence that is relevant to the actual contested case. A U I P A request doesn't have to show relevance to anything anyone's doing. You could just say, I want this information for reasons that you're not allowed to ask me about. But, um, you know, but you can be charged for copying fees and, and staff time spent to locate those documents. The discovery process, you don't, that, that's, that's different. But can be more narrow than a U I P A request. So like you would, you would need them to be relevant to this case. So, yeah, in thinking about that, you would maybe want to have a caveat, publicly available documents that are relevant, you know, that, you know, that you can identify as being relevant to the, to the case.
Yeah, I think the application and then the publicly available documents that are related to, I guess, I'm-
And you can check with the parents potentially if this is gonna get, um, I mean, it might not give them everything they want, but if they've got, if, if you want to sort of look at what they're looking at here to, to phrase it so that everyone, you know, gets what they, what they need and documents that you as a commission are, you know, wanting to see as part of the record anyway, potentially, then I think you can, you can formulate that. But yeah, if you want to deal those, deal with those areas, I think that's fine.
Sure. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Chair. Didn't we ask them to provide that list to us? And the document received was more this very high level of, we want all stopped. So I, I believe if I was correct, sorry, I believe if correct, that our last meeting, that was the, the request was for them to provide the specific list of materials that they were looking for versus a general.
Correct.
So I guess I would ask the question to them is, why did we not receive that request? This, the specific request?
Mr. Hurley?
Thank you for the question. So, uh, and I, I think Mr. Hopper, um, uh, and, and, and I think it's been confused by the way that the, the other parties have been talking about this, but Mr. Hopper very correctly described the Maui Planning Commission, uh, discovery process, right? First, before we provide you the actual discovery requests, that we need to be granted discovery. And so what we did was we went back forth, we went back to the, the broad discovery, the, the request for discovery that we made, and we added a whole bunch more detail, uh, with proofs of, of evidence on why we needed those, those particular things. Um, we reviewed the minutes and, and it did, we reviewed the minutes and it was pretty clear you guys were asking for the discovery request again with a little bit more detail. So we, we, we added office of proof to provide you that, the reasoning on why we would need those specific documents. Um, under, under what I believe, and I believe Mr. Hopper correctly described the Maui Planning Commission process, after you guys approved discovery, limited or not, then we will again provide, uh, whether the chair, a few folks decided that the chair should be the one to review that, or the entire commission, who would then provide those specific requests to the chair. In the past, we didn't even do that. We were just authorized in, while they had six seven, we were just authorized to issue discovery. We issued the discovery. And i- if, uh, if the, if the parties didn't comply, we, we did a motion to compel. I believe that, that, that's actually, um, what we did in six seven. We ended up trying to do a motion, uh, had to do a motion to compel on, on that case as well. But that's the process, right? First, we're authorized to do that. We, we, we sub, we amended what we said, said previously and added more office of proof to say, this is specifically why we need it. And from the discussions, it seems like you, you folks are right on point, right? We're trying to ascertain how this, how we got to the decision. Simply with the fact that we don't have the application is, is, is a great example. Um, so that's, that's, that's what was provided. Um, and we went through the minutes and that's how, was our understanding of what you folks were requesting. If we got that wrong, we apologize. Um, but that's how, how it was done in the past and what we believe is appropriate.
Mr. Ward?
Thanks. So it's just a follow-up question. So if you know that you didn't have the application, why would that not have been included in your discovery request? Because obviously, I would agree that's an important document, but so I would have called that out, knowing that I didn't have that.
So a- again, this is, there's thousands and thousands of pages of public documents that we've been going through. Um, and, and, and I apologize if we didn't get everything. Um, but again, we are just providing office of proof as to why these areas of documents and why these, these specific things we believe are necessary. Remember, we're not trying to make the decision now. We're trying to gather the evidence necessary so that when we go to the contested case hearing, we can call the right witnesses. We can present the right exhibits, that we have those, those pieces of evidence together, right? Um, and at that point, you folks can decide on relevance and all those other matters. So generally, that's why discovery is, 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 is very broadly given. Um, again, I, I can't, I can't tell you exactly why we didn't specifically call out, we're missing the application here because honestly, there's a ton of things we're probably missing. Um, um, you know, people say there's all these documents, but when you look at what's actually happened, a- as even the county noted, right? He couldn't, they couldn't say how we got from A to B, I, I think was called it last time, right? How we ended up here. And so those are the missing documents we're trying to get at. And there is a number of them. And that's why we provided these large, um, provided the request again. Um, and because again, you folks weren't able to vote on this last time. So again, the process would be after this, we would follow up with very specific document requests, whether it's interrogatories, 30 or 60 interrogatories, very specific document requests, um, that are noted here. But that, that is at least been the process for how I've been proceeding with my planning commission contested cases while I've been doing them.
May I, may I ask a question?
Um, yeah, I want to respond to him first. So Mr. Hurley, like at our last meeting, you know, everybody spoke a lot about wanting to be timely with this, to keep the process moving, to not cause any delay. And our discussion last time and our ask to you was to give us more like specifics of what documents, people, questions you are looking to, um, get through this discovery process. And quite frankly, in a sense, you kind of just reworded your same request with different formatting and new bullets. Um, and we're trying to get, to, to your points, I think, we're trying to get specifically like A, B, C, D items and questions that we will need to make our decision. And like, we're, we're spent a couple of hours now trying to work through this. And it would have been super helpful if you could have, I think specifically answered the question or the request we had for you to identify what exactly you're looking for to uncover through this discovery process. And now we are working through ourselves, what which pieces of information we will need to make a sound decision on your appeal. So kind of like help us, help you. But we are here now and I don't think any of us want to continue this for another meeting. We have lots of stuff before us on all of our agendas, not discounting the importance of this issue at hand, because I agree, it is very significant and has implications for many more projects on this island. Okay, so this being the case, it would have been great if, given all the time you've been spending on this and all the many hours of efforts and conversations and people involved, if you would have come to us with like a very, again, specific list of what you're looking for. So now we are at the point of figuring that out on our own, based on the kind of broad ideas you've raised in your motions. Um, Mr. Billbury, please go ahead. Okay. Okay. So commissioners, this all being said, again, what do we think we will need through this discovery process to be able to pour over, make an informed decision?
Just a caveat with that, too. What the, in a discovery process, it's normally the quester who drives that question. So to an extent is, what of what the appellants have requested, do you believe is information that you'd want them to allow the discovery process to be utilized that would assist you? Yeah. So they've made sort of the, the request and what of that do you believe would be that you, you are okay with allowing the discovery process such that it would help your decision-making? So just a little different, but yeah, I think that's, you're on the right track.
Thank you. Um, so Commissioner Kailo Ha, you are looking at the applications that were submitted for buildings A and F and communications between the director and the applicant, um, in regards to those applications, whatever is publicly available there?
Yes.
And I want to make sure that that includes that January 14, 2022 letter that keeps getting referred to, that people say they can't get a copy of. And so would that be your motion?
Yes.
And then again, this is discovery to the County of Maui from, from the, 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 the party that this is being requested of is going to be from the applicant to the County of Maui requesting this information or to the applicant requesting the information. Because the county would be the government agency that would generally have the application and the communications between the applicant and, and the county. Although I guess if it's communications from the applicant to the county, the applicant could potentially have some of those as well. So you may want to identify the document, you've identified the documents to be produced, but you should probably also identify the parties that the requests are going to be allowed to.
So that the County of Maui provide those documents to the appellant?
Well, the appellants say they don't, if, if you're saying the application, well, the party that would have the applic, the application would be the County of Maui, because it would have been filed with the county. And the party that, that should have all the communications from the county to the A O A would be the county as well as a government agency. The A O A could potentially have either of those, I guess. So, but I, I, I'm thinking those would be the parties. But normally, I think you would identify, if you're going to allow discovery, you would say what discovery is allowed and who are the parties involved in the discovery. So the appellant would be allowed to conduct discovery to get those documents and from whom is, how, how to identify that. Because they're going to send something out to a party that says produce these documents by this day. And, um, they're going to have to come, have time to gather those documents, review to see if there's any privileged information in them, identify the privileged information, um, by a log, which they normally do, and then respond back with those documents. And so you would need to know who those are going to be sent to and, uh, you know, and go into response times and stuff. But I think identifying the documents is the hardest part. The others are, you know, you know, so I, I think you are, it sounds like you're saying that information from the County of Maui, um, or potentially the A O A. I think that's up to you. Um, and then come up with, uh, maybe discuss with the parties what reasonable response times are for, for those items.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if the group agrees, but I'm trying to help you formulate your sort of beginning motion.
Yeah. So I'm moved to allow the motion to discovery for, uh, the applications um, and which the County of Maui would provide and the, uh, documents related to our communication between, um, the county and the applicant. Yeah, regarding the permit applications. Um, either, I mean, I guess I could just, I mean, from the county and the A O A. Um, and then I am, we can, yeah. If we get there, we can discuss timelines.
That, does a timeline have to be part of the motion?
Well, you could do that. You could also have the chair decide that as well. Um, or you could put it in a timeline. If the parties can sort of reasonably agree on a timeline now, you could have that as part of your motion because that's going to be the decision being made. And because we're at a pretty tight timeline for the hearing, you may want to decide that today rather than putting that off. So, I mean, I guess you could see right now, I guess you could ask, it's a little irregular, but you could ask sort of the parties theoretically, if a motion like that were to pass, what's a reasonable timeframe for providing those, those documents? Just so you're, you, you can, uh, be, be aware of that as part of the motion.
And for reference, our hearing is January 14th.
Oh, I thought it was December. Okay. Um, yeah, can, I don't know who would go first, but the part, can the parties provide like a timeline for-
Probably ask the county and the-
County.
The, the applicants, um, what they're thinking as far as the timeframe to produce what you've requested. There would be the producees or, I don't even think that's a word, but there would be the respondents to the discovery request.
Awesome.
That's probably not even a word.
I believe the U I P A request, um, and Mike, you can, you can confirm this for me, but I believe that that was 150 pages of communications. So we're happy to produce that again. That could be done relatively quickly. The application should be relatively accessible. So 30 days? What, what is today?
November 12th.
November 12th. Hearing's January 14th. Let's try for two weeks. So we don't have any additional delays.
But we're also talking about all communications between the A O A.
I think they've already been produced, Mike.
Okay. Well, I mean, if it's duplicative, then that's-
Yeah, like I just said, we're happy to reproduce them, but I'm pretty sure-
Right.
From my recollection, that the documents that were sent in response to the U I P A request was 150 pages of communications. I remember kind of sifting through them. Most of them, if not virtually all of them, from the planner. Uh, I'm not clear the director would have been having direct communications with the A O A, but if there are those, we'll, we'll get them.
Planner versus director.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, we'll, we'll get them all. But yeah, my understanding is the, it's generally the planner that works with, dealing with the, uh, applicant and, and the director who has the whole department to deal with, isn't necessarily engaged in communications with every single applicant that submits an application.
Yeah, you'd be looking for what? All communications from the department, between the department and the A O A with respect to either of these applications?
Yeah.
Is that's what you're, you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think two weeks from today.
Okay.
I'll work on getting all that together.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure of our process, if we're going to approve it and then have the appellants file the request, send the request to you saying that, you know, the topics of, of these, you can get started on them after the commission does that.
It, it was pretty clear to me what was being asked for in the motion, which was the applications and the communications. We don't need a separate request from them for that.
Well, well, we, we maybe need a, well, we're talking about the commission enforcing its own order versus a discovery request in case something, you know, happens in the request. So-
You, that, we'll get the documents, right? We don't need a separate request from the applicant for that, which is just going to cause more delay.
Okay. You want to hear from the applicants at this point to see if they've, uh, got any thoughts on timeframe?
Hopefully I was keeping up. Uh, Cal Chip Chase for the applicant. Um, I, I think the scope of what Commissioner Kailo Ha has articulated is reasonable for production of documents. If that had been the scope in the motion, we wouldn't have opposed it. Um, I will say that the the documents being all publicly available would be available through a U I P A. If the documents requested from the applicant, it's not that they're free to produce. It's just that the cost and burden is shifted to the applicant, because I'll have to review the documents and prepare them for production. My client will bear those costs rather than the appellants bearing the cost of copying through a U I P A. So it's, it's really just a cost shifting rather than a cost savings. Um, I had understood the request or the, the, the direction proposed is for the county to produce those documents. If that is the order of the commission, that the county should produce the applications and the communications that haven't already been produced. And obviously, it's a- And obviously, it's a burden on the county, but it doesn't concern my client with respect to timing or cost or otherwise. If the intention is to also impose the same requests on the applicant, then I would respectfully say that there's no reason for duplication, and I wouldn't want to be spending the time and cost together, the same records, the same applications, the same communications that the county is prepared to produce. So if I might suggest that the appropriate producing party is the county, as their public records, the county has indicated that it understands the nature and extent of the request and that it will comply with it without the need for further submission by the appellants. Uh, I think that that all seems appropriate to me, and I am entirely fine with the timeline that the county has proposed for its own production. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barring any unforeseen circumstances.
Until the mic.
I was just saying barring any unforeseen circumstances.
Okay, do you want to modify your motion?
Can you be a little bit more specific?
Or I guess is that enough? So documents, specifically the applications submitted for Buildings A and F from the county, provided by the county.
Yeah.
Um, communications between the department and the applicant specific to these applications to be provided by the county.
Yeah, I mean,
In two weeks.
If that is okay, I mean,
Within two weeks.
Those documents.
Yeah.
It's a burden on.
No, no, we are talking about the the application for the emergency um permit for Building A and the uh the SMA exemption application for Building F.
Yes.
Yeah, that that shouldn't be burdensome, at least. I'm seeing the Directors not disagreeing with me. So yeah, I don't think that'll be overly burdensome. And again, I I under from my recollection, most of the communications regarding at least Building F have been produced. If there are separate communications regarding Building A, we'll go get those, too. Um, but yeah, I don't see that as overly burdensome.
And it's Charlotte's setback approval also for Building F?
Yeah, I think that's all wrapped up in the same application and and approvals that were granted. Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah?
Yep.
So are you making that motion now?
I thought I already
Okay. Okay, just checking. Okay. Um, second by Commissioner Ward.
So this is only to the county? Or to county and the A or just the county?
Well, I mean, I guess just to the county, as long as the county says that that's not a burden on them, um, which Mr. Bill Berry just said.
Okay, and then as the plan, I I know we talked about this, but this is a motion to allow discovery. Normally, that's going to be done by the document production request. I think the county has volunteered to provide the documents directly to the Commission and the parties, but normally, this would be a request from the um from the appellants that you're being asked to allow requests from the appellants. So I I I think you can um, you're allowing this discovery. The county, I think, is representing. They're going to present this to you and the parties within two weeks. But I I I think that also authorizes the appellants to file that um that uh motion for production of documents to the county in order to to. So I think both of those things can happen, but I don't want to necessarily deviate from the the process and the rules too substantially. So I think your motion's fine, but just to be clear, that that's to to grant the motion for discovery to allow for what you've said, which is the the allow a request for production of the documents you've identified from the um appellants to the County of Maui to be produced within two weeks from today. Um, I think that if the appellants, I I could see why they would want to file that 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 um request for production of documents anyway, but it sounds like that the county is saying they're going to produce this to the to the 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 Commission and to the parties within two weeks anyway. So hopefully, that's that's clear.
Chair, uh, this is Ryan. Could I just make a note before you folks vote on that motion?
If you want to, yeah, sure.
Um, uh, first thing is is uh, we just wanted to know that we'd also like the any if there's correspondence, uh, we'd like any documents that would be attached to that correspondence to be provided as well. We've had that problem in the past where there's been all this correspondence and there's all these attachments that and then we we can't really sift through that because we don't know what they're talking about. So we we would just request that the documents attached to the correspondence be provided um and clarify that that Maui Planning Department will provide. If they don't want us to do that request, that they would provide that in from that that's the discovery materials within two weeks. That that's all. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I I think that's fine. That's if if you send a message with an attachment, the attachment is considered part of the communication unless it's otherwise privileged. So yeah, I think that would be understood to be there, but that's a fine clarification, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Okay. So a motion and a second. Do you want to speak to your motion? Speak to the second.
No.
Ms. Backerson? I was just gonna chime in that um all the applications are available online on maps. I just checked. And so um, we can produce a PDF version of that, like pull the digital and put it into a PDF with the attachments, but they're all the information is available currently online on maps, both applications.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, there I think no further discussion. Can we go for the vote? Commissioner Hipo Lito.
Aye.
Commissioner Kailoa.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Aye, Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Chair there.
Aye.
That's five votes. Wonderful. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, folks. Have a good afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Let us take uh. Oh, Director?
Yeah, just before you take your break, the next item is your um your training. And so just want to be mindful of that, that we need to get, we would very much like to get through all of that. And you do have a South Maui Community Plan meeting this afternoon. So I very much hope that we can make this a short break.
Yep. If can. Yep, I am going to say until twelve fifteen. Promptly this time. We're not going to give extra time on this recess.
All right.
Recess.
And pass.
So yeah, so that's a big problem.
Done. For community plans.
Yep.
Community plan.
Yes, I got it.
Should share screen? Yeah.
I'll find it.
All right.
Did you see we're recording?
And remember, we have a public testimony.
So cold.
All right. Welcome back, everybody, dedicated viewers and listeners. Thank you for being here with us. This is our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four. And we are about to go into part one of our orientation workshop. Um, but before we do so, I'm reminded by Corp Counsel that we should open up for public testimony. So is there anybody signed up to testify? Okay, Mr. Johann Law, I understand is sign up to testify online.
Hello.
Oh, hold on one second. We are missing one Commissioner who is coming back now. Where to go? Okay. We have five Commissioners present. Uh, please go ahead, Mr. Law. You have three minutes.
Johann Law testifying on behalf of myself. Um, I'm I'm kind of surprised Commissioner Dicos is not here because I think he's the one most interested in the training. But um, I wanted to suggest some questions for you guys to ask uh based on the questions you've been asked. So um, the first is regarding the SMA rules, and it is why the SMA rules were struck down. Uh, what specifically is illegal about the new rules? Um, the second is is what I came up with watching the previous uh thing is how the Director assesses and makes decisions on um permitting enforcement, stuff like that. Uh, what it is they actually look at in addition to the application. Um, third question, what is the purpose of coastal zone management um as stated in the law? And let's see. I think that is it. Mahalo.
Any questions for the testifier? Okay, Signan, thanks for your testimony. Anybody else signed up to testify? Okay, if you wish to testify, please um write your name in the chat. We don't have anybody here in the gallery. Otherwise, public testimony will close in three, two, one. Okay, public testimony is closed. Director, please go ahead.
Mahalo, Chair. So I'm just gonna open with a few minor remarks. Candace is gonna run the show today, but a couple of things that I just want to say to get us started. Um, we handle a lot of issues in this Commission, and from time to time, it's important for us to pause and regroup and take a look at our mandates and then relearn what we forgot. Um, today is the day that we start this process. So this will take approximately two meetings for training, of course, unless we run out of time, then we'll have to add a third. Uh, I'm asking you today to just please stay focused, even if you've heard this a thousand times. I know some of you have been on this Commission for a while, and it's easy to go. Uh, I already know that, but there may be some gems. I rewatch movies all the time, and I see new new stuff that I haven't seen before. So I encourage you to to pay attention. Um, and then for for folks who are newer to this information, ask all of your questions. There are no silly questions, even if you're not new to this information and you're like, oh, I have a I have a question, but I don't want to look silly. It's okay. Please ask all your questions. Uh, this is a safe place for you guys to learn and grow and um we're here to support you. So thank you so much to Candace and her team for putting this together and looking forward to to all the good information.
Thank you, Director. Candace Backerson, Supervisor to Boards and Commissions. So before we begin, just to quickly, so um, you know, I know the testifier was mentioning SMA topics, but that will not be covered today. That will actually be in the second part of the training. Today, we're doing an overview of just planning framework in general. Then we'll go into zoning, HRS, um, and some short term rental and B and B, mostly permits that the current division does. At your next training, we'll do a deeper dive into SMA because you see so many of those. Um, hopefully, we'll also have Office of Planning come. Um, and then we'll have our Long Range Division as well as um Planning Implementation Division and Department of OED Resources as well. So we try to even bring in some outside agencies to to just kind of fill the picture. But for now, I'll turn over the um planning framework to Kurt Wallenholt. Yeah, let me go ahead and share screen so that we can start this. Let's see. It's going. Now. There we go. Okay, Congress. I just over. It's not showing on there, though, what I'm doing here. It's weird. One second.
This is one word.
You know, you know why when you're watching offspring, that's why they're standing.
What?
When you notice when people on the scene, they're standing. It's what's you sit for. You can see someone. Yeah.
I'm beginning.
See them all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what you guys look like. Like us. Little things. Just tiny little.
So I'm sharing.
But I feel like I kind of get in here once in a while, and I kind of see her.
Luckily, you stop sharing.
You can be anonymous here. We're just little heads, but we're like Mel.
And then entire.
Yeah. You know, you pick your nose and everything.
Yeah, that's what I've been doing. And then I go.
I saw on TV.
People thought like
virtual meeting. We would they would they would have a different.
Yeah.
They're just like, look.
Yeah, they used to come sit right here and then
Recognize the end table public a lot. Why do I know you?
Oh, more than a slight delay.
And you do forget about it a lot. Because when you're just doing it, and also it's like you're like, and all of a sudden, the camera's like Yeah.
Yeah, they used to do that. I think council members now, I think they each have a computer, most of them.
Yeah, let's see.
So yeah, back in the day, they actually had filming them. So I think they had different camera angles. It's probably like go to this shot, sort of that shot. Pretty um. It's a pretty good.
Was my bomb guard.
Watch it on. You can see.
And make it go faster.
Do it anymore. I'll just web stuff.
I'm in resources. It tasted too.
Yeah, or they did all the I was on Costa Guard.
Let's see.
There's just so much that like, I mean, you know.
Making it go faster.
As work out how many more people testify on things now, where it's like, like drive to what we're going to testify on. You know, now, absolutely. Own testimony was like or we're just use this. Now they've been pretty accessible.
That's not too bad.
I like to be respectful. You get to.
I was always outside.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I put a man, I kind of see. You know, I jump in everyone's
Something else is accounting for the weirdness.
Face them because
I'm trying to get back.
Yeah, there's good good in that. Oh. Bomb site. Okay. It's nice that you could be like at work and take a break.
Thanks.
Five hundred and rather than
Yeah.
We have
I believe we're ready to commence.
Um.
The first item is how do you get this conference room warmer? So it would be subject to civilized meetings.
Not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it.
Keep it together, guys. Keep us on track.
Well, I'm going to provide what they call the overture. Your main acts, one, two, and three will be with Candace and Wilton and Michael Hopper, where they'll be looking at the nuts and bolts of today's training with the B and Bs and the HRS 343 and the zoning. So I'm just gonna set the stage, if you will. And that stage is which all of you know Hawaii has the most complicated planning law in the country. Could be arguably said that maybe California and some of its coastal commission items are difficult, but I think that Hawaii does take the cake. And that is also borne out in a book called Regulating Paradise by Professor Calles over at the University of Hawaii's Richardson School of Law. Perhaps we could get the planning director to give you each copy of this book because I think you'd find it, you'd find it interesting as it speaks to the history and it brings it all the way to the present. But in any event, it is the most regulated land use state in the country. That's why, as the director had said previously, it's important to ask questions. And it's important to ask questions of the process that you may find yourself in in cases coming forward with changes in zoning, community plan amendments, Maui Island Plan Amendments, conditional permits. So there's a lot to try to embrace. So ask questions, that's kind of a takeaway so far. So why is it so complicated? Well, it's complicated because we have all of these layers that have started laying upon since 1959 with the Constitution. Recently, we've had sustainability and Hawaii State Plan additions. We have multi-state functional plans, coastal zone management plans, state land use commission rules, which we'll talk about in just a bit. Of course, environmental review from the E, Environmental Impact Statements. We have the Maui Island and Countywide Policy Plan, Island Plan, Community Plan and Zoning. So that's why these decisions can take a long time and they're complicated. So here's an easy, easy to use mnemonic. Whoa, hasn't moved yet. Let's see. Coming?
There we go.
Okay. Here's an easy to review mnemonic of how simplified this planning process is. You start out quizzically thinking what to do and in the end you find the key of wisdom and then you move on from that screen as fast as possible. But this sort of, it does give kind of a diagrammatic view of the kinds of permits that you'll be looking at into the future. So it was asked a few years ago, what's the planner's role? And it's really to get the planning commission ready for a review of the project. So why does a project take so long? It's, okay. Gotta wait for, okay. Why does a project take so long? In fact, it can take years to get to this commission. It's because there is a process by which the application has to be reviewed against all the different kinds of permits it may need. There will be environmental considerations on nearly all projects. Different agencies from the federal, the state and the county will be looking at this most likely. The applicant will then have to go back and forth and refine their application so that these questions can be answered in the staff report. Public meetings are now becoming highly encouraged on most larger projects certainly. And then finally, there's gonna be the report that you'll see for deliberation. So again, it was asked, what role does the planner? What role does that person play? And it really is to develop the project recommendation. And that only comes though from a very deep analysis of the application at hand. So state planning law has evolved since 59. But admittedly, and it comes from those in Honolulu, it needs more frequent updating. The Constitution provides the basis from 59 and the Planning Act in 78 and 86 established statewide planning system. Nevertheless, I believe these decennial, every 10 years updates are a little bit behind schedule. And in addition, we have the county side for the review. And that comes from, of course, the Charter, which explains the general plan and community plan update processes. And then also the zoning, the zone management and the environmental impact statements. I believe this afternoon you'll be looking at a community plan. So that's where 2.8 OB comes into play. And then you also look this morning at a county zoning application with Title 19, which is our Maui County Code. And then as Candace indicated, you'll be looking at training in the Coastal Zone Management Program at another date. So Hawaii is unique with its state land use designation. And why did this come around? Well, if you go back, way back into history, there's always been kind of a a, an agreement that there's been a sort of a statewide or land use wide centralized land planning process. So Hawaii is unique in the sense that from the state level, not the county, not the federal, but from the state, all the lands are divided into four. The agricultural, the conservation, the rural and the urban. So that is unique. And while this chart is little, it appears to be outdated. It's really not outdated at all because these numbers don't really change. It's often said that it feels like everything being urbanized. Well, from a state land use classification perspective, the urban zoned state lands are still only about five to six percent of the land. So even from 69 to 2011, and it's also been confirmed for recently, that this amount of urbanized land is not greatly changed. The vast majority of land is still held in agriculture and conservation uses. And here it breaks it down from Maui Island. Maui Island does tend to emulate what's going on in the state in general, again with ag and conservation providing the vast majority of these zone lands. So the key takeaway is you've got 94, 95% of the lands in agricultural or conservation use with 5% classified as urban. Now, why does this really matter? Well, it matters because a change to these land types, if it's over 15 acres, has to go to the State Land Use Commission. That's a body of nine people appointed by the. It's going. It's going. We're waiting a minute, okay. Appointed by the governor and I believe confirmed probably by the Senate. And it's a quasi judicial process, highly technical, requires a phalanx of lawyers on all sides. They meet here when there's a Maui project. Mr. Bruce Uu is currently the Maui representative. It's a complicated process for all parties involved. It's expensive, detailed, time consuming, and some would say redundant because they're making a decision on zoning changes, which then will come to the county for a change in zoning and community plan amendment. So some people argue it's redundant. Other people say that's a guardrail. It's a guardrail to a county just speeding out of control. I'll let you decide which you like to make your opinion. But if you have a chance, I would recommend that you go to a state land use commission meeting just to see how the process functions. Now, if it's under 15 acres though, you are the operating as the state land use commission. So there's two areas in which the land use commission can become involved. One would be a district boundary amendment. So over 15 acres, that's going to go to the state land use commission, the board of nine people who will meet usually here. If it's under 15 acres, then the county will process it and you, as the commission, will provide a recommendation to the council who would make the final decision. And that's a decision, like I mentioned, should we take some ag land? Under 15 acres, if it comes here, send it to urban. Should we take some urban land, take it back to ag? That doesn't happen very often. But that's why this process regarding the state land use commission is really important to try to understand. It functions sort of independently as the county code does. And then the other important item and permit are the state special use permits. Now, you've seen a lot of them because every B and B and every STRH and ag has to get a state special permit. That's, that's the way that that happens and that requires a public hearing. So if, again, if it's under 15 acres for a state special permit to hold a specific type of activity that's not otherwise allowed, then this body under 15 acres will make the final decision. So that's why this becomes important. Now, if it's greater than 15 acres, this commission will hold a public hearing and they actually make a recommendation, you make, you make an approval on it. Then that's sent up to the state land use commission, which then will look at the whole process again. An example of that has been, at least in the past, our county landfill. We've been operating with special permits to operate those landfills greater than 15 acres in an agricultural setting. So that's been a big special permit item. Some changes on that process could be coming in the future, but it's just important to know that you have this whole area of land use commission and you have the area of county zoning. And oftentimes those two intersect and this commission gets involved.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, you can ask, sure.
This also applies to the SMA and short of like even changes in zoning within the SMA also goes to council and LUC, not to, we don't have the final authority on that.
Well, changes in SMA, you'll have the authority to make an SMA final decision. But if you're changing SMA boundaries, then that would have a long process.
But to change zoning.
Oh, yeah.
That still goes to county and council and the.
Exactly, you'll make a recommendation. And I think Candace is gonna speak to zoning. Yeah. So you'll make a recommendation and then the council makes the final decision. Yeah. So, but you have a lot of resources to use. Here are just a few of them. You've got the Urban Design Review Board, CRC, the Hana Advisory Committee. You now have the South Maui and Paia Haiku Committees, Arborist Committee. So there's lots of resources that can be used to help in making your decision. And you know, finally, your role is really to use your wisdom and to make balanced final recommendations to the council or to make final decisions here as you're able to do in an island appropriate way. And that kind of concludes the general framework. And I leave you with one question, you know, the, what's the use of land in Hawaii? Is it right or is it a privilege? So I'll let you think about that question. But thanks, and I believe you're gonna move on to the zoning now.
I'm gonna try something to help with this delay.
Any other questions for Mr. Wallenholt?
Just checking. Thank you for that presentation, for the overture, should say. I just wanted to add a little bit to Kurt's. So I do sometimes community outreach and I talk about the planning process and things like that. And so I just wanna emphasize that you guys are not making these decisions alone and in a silo, right? There's many different agencies that are contributing to these decisions. Most of that happens at the time of agency transmittal. So when we receive the application, the staff will take a look at it. But then we have like 57 different agencies that we can send these projects to, to then be reviewed. Public Works, Wastewater, Office of Planning, Army Corps of Engineers. And so we send it to them and we wait for their comments. And usually that's included in your staff report as well. And then we can take that, because I wish we were a jack of all trades, but we're not the archaeologist and the engineer and everybody. So we rely on the subject matter experts from these agencies in their field to give us those comments, just so you guys are aware. And then, you know, in your staff report, you do just wanna make sure that you're analyzing the permit against the criteria for that permit. I remember just recently at one of your meetings, there was some discussion about some seawall or some other issues on a, on a B and B permit. But you need to make sure that the criteria that you're looking at is the one that you're using to analyze and draft conditions for. So you want, like even today, when with the questions on the septic, on the change in zoning and things like that, you just wanna always go back to the staff report where the staff includes what criteria you should be using to, for that particular permit. There might be an issue with something else, but you can only use the criteria in the permit that the applicant is requesting. Okay? So I'm just gonna go into zoning a little bit, Title 19, which is a lot of permits that you guys will see and analyze. Besides SMA, it's not just that. It feels like that sometimes, but it's not just that. Okay, so what is zoning? So zoning allows, HRS allows for zoning at the county level and we have Title 19, Maui County Code, which you can go online and you can view the Maui County Code, Title 19. And zoning is used to encourage the most appropriate use of land. We like to conserve and stabilize the value of property, but also preventing certain uses that will be detrimental to existing uses as well as the environment, although that's a little bit more with the SMA and HRS. But zoning takes that into account as well and to promote the health, safety and general welfare of all of the respective districts. Okay, so when applications come in, and usually you guys don't even see these things, this has to be the bare minimum to even get before you. They have to meet all the criteria and they have to meet the county code. So the application will be looked at for the height of buildings, setback, slot size, width, density, parking, landscaping, all of that should be hammered out before it comes to you. Yeah, I saw you.
Sorry, the slide before this. Conserve and stabilize the value of property. How do you define value in this case?
So it's more like you wouldn't wanna put a toxic waste site next to a new residential development because that might negatively impact their property value. So it's kind of taking a look and seeing where related uses are going to be appropriate and not just detrimentally take away someone's property value overnight by building, you know, a landfill next door to a single family residential area, something like that. Was that a good example?
I think so. So it's more not just monetary value, I guess is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, I mean monetary value, obviously, but.
Part of it.
But monetary value is also just based in, do you want that piece of, like, what is, what's good about it, right? Does it make you feel good? Does it have a good effect? All of that, please roll in. Okay. So, and like I was saying, just breathe. Oh, well, I guess it's still on delay. I guess I was moving too fast for, okay, so in this slide, and you guys have the slides there too before you. And anybody who's online and listening, and if you're annoyed by this delay, you can go to the Maui Planning Commission Agenda and they're all linked there and you can click on it and this PowerPoint presentation will pull up for you as well. So we have various zoning districts, residential, agriculture, business, hotel, industrial uses. And you really just wanna be smart about where you're putting them, right? This isn't like playing civilization or whatever. When you used to play that back in the day in school where if you messed up, you could just, you know, go, oh, tornado and then, you know, you know, you can't do that. What we have is how it's going to be, so we have to be thoughtful about where we place things for good uses to make sure that, yeah, property value is stabilized, but also that people just have a healthy, good, pleasant environment to live in. Okay, these are all important things. And so we have various different zoning districts and within those we have permitted uses. So my example is always if you have a residentially zoned area and you wanna build a single family home, that's permitted. You don't need a use permit from us, okay? Then we have accessory uses, which are uses that are similar, but not maybe outright permitted. And so that might be potentially doing a daycare, a daycare for a couple of kids in a residential area, like in your single family home. That's not a permitted use outright, but it could be an accessory use to you living in the house, okay? And then we have special uses. And special uses are things that could be similar to that, but they may have more of a significant impact and so we wanna take a look at them. And that might be a daycare for 25 children versus five. I think there's like a limit on what accessory uses versus a larger one. Or sometimes we see weddings. Weddings wanna go into like a residential area, sometimes down in McKenna or lovely places, you know, that people wanna do. That's a special use because you need to start thinking about parking, noise, lights, things like that. So they have to apply and that's a special use permit and that comes before you guys. And then there's also conditional use permits and conditional are ones that are even something that we think needs even more of an analysis. So we have different layers, obviously, of what people can do. Okay, so like I was just saying, we got county special use permits. So you are the final authority on these. So you will hold the public hearing. So we'll take a look at the permit, we'll analyze it against the rules, send it out to agencies, bring it before you. You're the final authority on county special use permits, okay? For conditional permits, and that is again, something that's related to the zoning district, but needs a higher level of review. You are not the final authority. You will hold the public hearing and you'll make a recommendation onto council. But council is the final authority on that. And that one is weddings. And so I have an example of one here that I did a long time ago for weddings at the Menele Bay Golf Course. Okay, that was a conditional permit. And so that went before the commission, we got your recommendation, but then we took it to council ultimately. Okay? And in that instance, I think it went to the Lanai Planning Commission, not before this one. Because there's three, right? There's, just for the record, there's Maui, Molokai and Lanai for the planning commissions. Okay. Then we have planned developments and I'm gonna kind of do these two slides together. We have planned developments, we also have project districts. They're very similar. They encourage desirable design and land use patterns and they overall unit density while maintaining common space areas, recreational. while maintaining common space areas, recreational community facilities. So this tax is an overlay district. This is a little bit easier for people to do land swaps, like zoning swaps, instead of coming in and doing a change of zoning. Wailea is a plan development, is a PD, plan development. And so sometimes as Wailea is being built out, they had a grand plan for where they wanted to put everything. But as human nature evolves and things pop up, you might go, well, maybe we shouldn't have had this land use here. We could maybe swap it with open space somewhere else. And so they can do that through the plan development process instead of doing a full change in zoning because it's an overlay district. Okay? And so that will come before you for Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One of a plan development is usually a zoning map and it's all the different types of overlay areas and where they're going to go. The step two, the PD2, is when they start talking about the vertical buildings, the vertical drawings of all the buildings and where they're going to go. And you guys get to take a look at that. And then step three is administrative, the department does that. And that's after they have the land use map, all their vertical drawings done, then the department gets the fun job of looking at the like curb cuts and gutters and the really nitty gritty kind of one. And we just do that administratively. We figure if this body has already approved where the uses are going to go and what the buildings are going to look like, we kind of do the details and we do that administratively. And that's very similar to plan developments. And so I hear I have Puamana as an example of a plan development. Oh, as well, yeah, Puamana. And then we've got project districts as well. And so they're very similar. Both allow for flexible and creative planning approaches rather than specific land use designations. The project districts, though, are established through the community plan. So that's a little bit of a difference between plan developments and project districts. Okay? And also project districts, because they're established through the community plan, you are for Phase One, you are a recommendation to council. Okay, so it'll come to you, you'll do a recommendation, but it'll go to council. You will do the Phase Two approval of the preliminary site plan. And so I know this is like a lot of information because we have so many different permits that we do. And that's why it's important, like I said in the staff report, that the staff lays out the criteria for each permit because they're different by each one. Okay, and so here's an example of a project district, and this is Maui Lanai. So Maui Lanai was established through the community plan and that's a project district. And then change in zoning, like you guys saw earlier, that allows for a zoning change from one use to another. And you guys hold the public hearing like you did today and you will give your recommendation onto council and council is the final authority on that. And that also goes for community plan amendments as well as district boundary amendments. Okay? So all these things are going to come to you, you know, they're, we're going to have the application, you're going to have staff's analysis, it's been sent out to various agencies and been vetted, and then we're just going to give you our recommendation. On some of these, you will also be providing a recommendation to council and on some of them, you will be the final authority. Staff will always let you know beforehand what's going to be happening with the permit, but that's about it. From there, you guys can then make your decisions, ask questions, get that information and take it to council. I also just wanted to talk briefly, and I'm sure court counsel will go into it later, but just I noticed the commission usually is always struggling with conditions, right? And like what do we put on permits and things like that? So I just want to say that it's very helpful to staff when we like to have a who, what, where, when, why, how kind of thing, right? So when you're crafting a condition, you want to say something like that the applicant shall install bike racks on the left side of the property and proof of such to be given in a compliance report. If you just say that they will install bike racks, when? 20 years from now? Before the permit gets done? Things like that. So staff always appreciates that. We're here to nudge you in that direction and hopefully take notes of what you're saying and then read them back to you to help you craft conditions. I want to make sure that there's always a nexus to what you're talking about. So if it's a like shoreline parcel, then you can discuss shoreline issues, but there's also proportionality, right? If it's a small project, you can't be asking for something really, really large as a condition on it. There has to be not only a nexus, but a proportionality to what you're doing. And I don't want to step too much on court counsel's toes. I know he's probably got plenty of slides on those topics, not to set you up too much, Popper. Okay, and so that's it pretty much on the types of permits that you guys will see. Do you have any questions? Yes, Commissioner?
So with the new changes for the community plans, the land designations are different than the existing ones? I guess when the plan gets approved, we're going to be dealing dual sets, that's correct.
So when it gets approved, the new community plan is the community plan at the time. And I'm pretty sure, and I wish our director, she's a long range, former staff of the long range department, so she probably have the perfect answer for this. But when they're looking at it and we're redesignating, you're trying to match it too, as you're doing the community plan. And as this commission knows, as they're working their way through the South Maui Community Plan, you don't want to approve something that's going to then create a conflict for the applicant where as soon as you approve the plan, they now can't develop anything because they have a community plan that conflicts with their zoning. But right, so Kate, as you stepped out, Commissioner Ward had a great, had a long-range question, a community plan question. And so he was saying, you know, how when they do the new plans and there's new land use designations, do those two, do the two documents conflict? And I was saying, no, the new community plan is the new community plan.
What was the other document that I was comparing?
Oh, just like the old one?
Oh, the old one, yes.
The new one supersedes it.
Exactly. So the new community plan takes the place of the old community plan. So there is no conflict between those two things.
But in the short term, but in the short term, we'll actually be using?
Just one.
Well, but so if South Maui, so as an example, South Maui gets approved at some point, we would be using the South Maui designations and land uses for them, but if Hana has not completed?
Correct.
And we're going to be using the old set. So we have to keep in mind that it's two different, what, two different zoning?
It's nine different plans. So every, and it's just to be clear, the layers and we usually, I don't think we had a graphic in this one, I wasn't looking at that particular time, but there's layers to think in your South Maui Community Plan, there is a graphic that shows you this. But that the community plan, you know, is that baseline and then there's, and then there's the zoning that goes on top of that. I will say that there is some times where our zoning is not as advanced as our new community plan designations. And so it's, it's not perfect yet, but our goal with Title 19 is to perfect that. But yeah, so just to be clear, so West Maui and when South Maui is adopted have fresh, completely different looking community plan designations than everyone else's.
And just to elaborate on that, so I know exactly what slide you're thinking of that we usually show. So I think of land use designations as an upside-down triangle. Okay, so you have your largest one on top first, which would actually be the state land use. And there's only like four, right? Urban, ag, conservation and rural. Okay, so you're going to have that first. Then you have your community plan, getting more narrow, right? You got your state land use designation, then you have your community plan. Then you have your zoning. Okay, so a little more narrow because the community plan then breaks it into nine areas, then zoning breaks it into almost like the parcels, okay? Then you have your overlay districts, which are getting even more narrow. You can have SMA, right? That's even, that's only a portion of all the lots. And then you have shoreline, which is only a small portion of the SMA. And then you can even have historic district. I mean, you can just get more and more narrow. So I think of it as an upside-down triangle with it just getting, just zooming in more and more and more onto the land use. But all those layers have to work together.
To that, just to add to that, there's another graphic that was shown in another one of these slide presentations of like a butterfly. And like the state land use is like the outline of the butterfly. And then county zoning is like the pattern outlines within the wings and then you get the color within the wings, you know, it's like more and more detail as you go on.
It's much prettier.
Yeah.
Okay, I like my upside-down triangle, but I'm here for a butterfly.
I'm just thinking, because we look at maps all the time. Yeah. And so like thinking how they all lay onto a map that you like.
Yeah, it's like a wedding cake. We're just layering it, just keep on layering it. Okay? Yeah.
So how far does our SMA extend?
So the SMA is usually from the high wash of the wave because that is state jurisdiction, wherever the water touches, you know, most of the time, up to the nearest state highway is how the state of Hawaii drew it in 1977. Oahu really kind of had the like authority to draw that. So they went from the high wash of the wave up to the nearest state highway, which in Kehoe is all of Kehoe because it's Pe'elani Highway, but.
We're going to get a orientation specific for SMA and shoreline, right?
Yeah, you'll have one at the December training by Jim and Tara and hopefully OP as well, state OP. Yeah, okay. So that ends the zoning one. And I'm also, I'm act two. So that is HRS, which is environmental, environmental assessments and environmental impact statements. So these aren't really permits per se, these are reviews that get done and are presented before you, for you guys to make a decision on. Sometimes you make a decision and sometimes you're a commenting agency. It depends who the accepting authority is. So we have the environmental review process is Chapter 343 Hawaii River statutes. It was adopted in 1974 and it's to encourage conservation of natural resources. And so it's kind of funny, Kim, actually, you know, we were saying the zoning was all preserving property value, but then, you know, and then in the seventies, they were like, oh, maybe that's not the only important thing. So we're also trying to make sure that we protect what inherently would make the properties valuable as well. So we want to enhance quality of life. We want to make sure that we are protecting what makes Maui Maui, right? You can't lose Maui's sense of place. And this also assures public participation as well. Okay. And so, oh, here's another, I love Venn diagrams, similar to the zoning with the layers or even shoreline and SMA where I sometimes say, you know, if you're in the shoreline, you're in the SMA. If you're in your kitchen, you're also in your house. It's a Venn diagram, right? So here we have the larger circle is like all projects, but not all, not all projects are subject to 343. There are certain triggers for it. And so then it comes in and that's that second circle. So then we take a look at it and then we see, does this have an exemption category or not? And so if it doesn't, then it requires an EA. And then we do that. And if the EA was not found to be satisfactory, you can always ask for a full EIS, which is an environmental impact statement. Okay, so this might be slightly outdated because Chapter 343 was just revised recently to add a couple more categories. But essentially there's nine triggers, use of state or county lands or funds, if somebody's doing a project in a conservation district, if somebody's doing a project in a shoreline area, if somebody's doing something with a historic site, the county general plan. And then we just have certain categories. It doesn't have anything to do with the use of the land. It has to do with the project itself, which would be wastewater facilities, waste energy facilities, landfills, oil refineries or power generating facilities. Any and all of these types of things will just trigger us to take a look at it. But after we take a look at it, we say, is it exempt? I mean, state, use of state or county lands or funds, it's like if we're replacing a window on the county building, you know, or if you're renovating the bathroom at Maui High, that's use of state or county lands or funds. Should they be required to do an EA? No, of course not. That's why we have exemption categories. And that's for things like operation, repairs and maintenance, replacement and reconstruction, new small facilities that are related to the use at hand, the condition, just minor conditions in land, water or vegetation, which sometimes could even be a shoreline area, but perhaps they're just SHPDs doing their initial discovery, right? And they have to go in and do a little bit of trenching. That doesn't require an EA. We allow them to go ahead and do that because they're gathering that information for a larger project. Interior alterations, demolition, zoning changes and just administrative activities. So we don't require them to go and do a full EA until we've at least taken a look at that. If they're exempt, then the department will issue an exemption administratively and you guys don't even need to worry about that. Okay, you only need to worry when we don't exempt it. And then we do require them to do an EA, a draft EA usually, which will go out to various agencies and the public and come before you for a first round of comments. The applicant will take those comments, incorporate it and then hopefully bring it back in the final EA to get your blessing or approval of a Fonzie, which is a finding of no significant impact. Or you could take a look at the draft EA and think that there is one. You don't have to issue a Fonzie. You could say, we think the impact is so great that we're not comfortable issuing a Fonzie on this EA and we would like you to go back and prepare a full EIS, environmental impacts study, okay? And so they have determinations of significance, different criteria you want to look at, the beneficial uses of the environment, any impacts on natural, cultural resources, public health, degradation of environmental quality, secondary impacts, population changes, the effects of that, right? If you're going to build a new subdivision in with several hundred homes, how is that going to affect schools, roads, secondary things like that? And let's see, the most common triggers are usually state or county lands or funds, historic district, conservation and shoreline. A majority of your reviews are EAs. I don't have, don't remember the last time we did an EIS. Danny might remember, he's got a lot of the larger projects for EISs. It's been a while since we've seen a full EIS. Usually it's an EA. I think McKenna might have done one or similar, but yeah. But it'll come before you and you guys will get to review. There's sometimes you're not the accepting agency, you'll just be a commenting agency, but we'll be sure to be clear about that. And then like I said before, the MPC issues the Fonzie or determines that the project will have significant impacts. If the Fonze is issued, then you can move forward on the other permit. Like if one comes in together, like an SMA major with an EA, you have to act on the EA first before we can move forward with the SMA. And if you do not want to issue the Fonzie, then the applicant will move to prepare a full environmental impact study. Are there any questions on that? It's a lot of information and I do think that usually it's easier when it's before you, right? When you have one before you and you're going through it. Okay. And I will turn it over to Wilton and Wilton will go over bed and breakfast and short-term rental home permits, which is also under your authority. Sorry, it's just delayed today. There we go. Thank you.
Aloha Chair and Commissioners. I guess I'm the final act. So my goal today is to stop talking before you stop listening. But today we're going to be talking, my section of it is bed and breakfast homes and short-term rental homes. These permits are needed for the use, which was established by the county code. And specifically the bed and breakfast is found in nineteen, Chapter 19.64. And the short-term rental homes can be found in 19.65, six-five of the code. Just as a, I think Kurt and I said, alluded to it, the application, the applicant will, you know, basically apply for this type of permit in this, for a B and B or short-term rental. And, you know, once we get the application, it's assigned to a planner who reviews all the documents and basically covers all the requirements for this type, these types of permits. And then it comes before the planning commission as well for the final say on whether it's approved or not. So, this next slide. So I wanted to start out with this, short-term rental home and B and B caps in each area, in each community plan area. I don't want to go through all the details, but just like for instance, Hana, the cap is 15 and the total permitted right now is 19. So you get, you know, the area you're looking at, you could just see the caps in your area for short-term rental homes. And then you could also see the caps for the B and Bs in the certain community plan This was recently updated on October 7th this year. So these are more of the most recent numbers. So what's the purpose?
Oh, question from Vice Chair.
Just have a question about the B and Bs. And then do those have to be separate homes? Let's say a property that you wanted, an Airbnb, not a STRH, a, do they have to be connected? In other words, can you have a cottage as one? And do they have to be connected? Because I, some, I was up country and someday I had like an awning from one building to another. He said it had to be for the county to do his.
This is for?
A B and B, yeah. So on the same law, because the owner has to live on. So on the same lot, because the owner has to live on the lot, right? And then can it be a separate dwelling? Or is it the same dwelling?
I believe it's. I, because I know the code was different before where it required one thing to be, for it to be connected.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah. So I could, I could get back to you on that or.
Okay, just checking. Yeah, we still have them. They came in here. We had one last meeting. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so the ordinance and the purpose of B and B and short-term rentals. It was to establish a permitting process, standards and restrictions. It also was to allow small businesses and an opportunity to benefit from tourism. The purpose also was to provide a visitor experience that is an alternative to hotels and resort and also to retain the character of the neighborhoods. Those are the initial purposes for these ordinances. So some of the similarities between STRHs and B and Bs. In the residential rural area districts, they are the only, they are only allowed in single-family dwellings. In agriculture district, they can be in no more than two farm dwellings. No more than six bedrooms can be permitted. They must have their tax, tax requirements as also. And they can be approved for one or five years. So a lot of times it could come before you and you have the choice to whether to do a year or five, up to five years. And then the permits must be held by a natural person. Property ownership can be by a trust. For STRHs only, it can be held by a corporation, LLP or LLC as well. And they cannot operate the business of B and B or STRH if the owner is away or or if the manager is not accessible. So those are some of the similarities between the two, the two types of permits. Okay, these are a lot of words on here and this is the differences between the two. So you mentioned the owner has to live on property. So that's something required for the, the B and B. It's not for the STRH. I'm just kind of skimming down to some other differences. Well, there's one specific, no new STRHs can be permitted within the Yehaku SMA area. So they decided as community and the council decided to put that in there as a requirement and a difference for the STRH. Also for B and B. It says here it shall have breakfast, but I know the code has mentioned, mentioned may have breakfast. And so we're in the, we're going through an application and we, we as planners would go through each of the requirements listed here to make sure that they meet these requirements. That's one we haven't really enforced if, if, what, in most cases, they just provide like some muffins or, you know, coffee just as a courtesy as well, but it's not required. It just said, the code just says it may provide breakfast. So those are some of the differences as you can read for yourselves between the two STRH and B and B permits.
To the Vice Chair's question, it says for STRH permitted in one single-family dwelling per lot. And then it says B and Bs can be in two.
Have to be connected.
Sounds like they can be separate, but if that person has a STRH, maybe they had to make the two dwellings be one. So they connected them.
Yeah, that's a good question. I know I have the answer of, had it before, but I just can't remember off the top of my head.
I'm sure we'll get one here. We'll, we'll be calling you.
So question on the STRHs, it says no new permitted within Yehaku, but we're still under the cap. So even though it's under the cap, there's still no more new ones?
Well, up to the cap.
Okay.
Yeah. So you've probably noticed in that chart that some are over the cap.
Yeah.
For, for West Maui. And so if it goes below the cap, it stays there. It doesn't, there's no new one added to it. If you were questioning that as well. Okay. And so these are some of the things that we as planners would sometimes go, go visit, do site inspections to make sure that these things are in place, such as the, you know, requirements for both STRH and B and Bs, like having a smoke detector in each of the bedrooms. So we'll walk through the place and make sure that they're all working and mounted fire extinguishers. These are all by code. It's, it's, these are all the things that we look for in the application and we actually go out and, and make sure that these things are in place. Important thing also is the house policies. Make sure that there's quiet hours between nine and eight AM, no amplified sound. No street parking, no, and for STRHs, no group gatherings. And so these are also some of the things that you hear complaints about when you, when you, when you have an application come before you as a commission. You know, are they making a loud noise, you know, throughout the night? As Kurt mentioned and even Candace mentioned, when you're dealing with agriculture land, just they require a special permit to, to do an STRH and a B and B on this particular district. And so they also required a farm plan. So the intent to show the compliance with the goals and objectives of HRS two oh five. The commission must determine if the particular farm plan meets HRS two oh five. And so the next paragraph is basically talking about how some of the, the land, it's required fifty-one percent of the land be used for agriculture. And so this is some of the things that they use to calculate to, to meet the requirements of the special permit on agricultural land.
Good, great question. How do, on an ongoing basis, how do we determine or enforce that the agland is actually being used as agland?
Yeah. So that's, we've come across, I guess planners, we've come across a lot of these where we'll go out and inspect the property for B and Bs or, and we'll, we'll, we'll actually have the applicant turn in, in like, you know, I'm growing all the orange trees here in this, this part of the land. I'm growing all the mangoes here. I'm using it for whatever agricultural purpose. And so we actually have measuring, basically measure and calculate the land, given the land and then we calculate it out, make sure it's over fifty-one percent of the property based on their, their plan that they submit. And so we actually physically go out there and look to make sure that what they say on their plan is, is there.
But so like an ongoing, because they get submitted, you approve it. You could check it. It looks good. Five years down the road, they say, eh, you know what, I'm gonna stop growing. So is it, is it an ongoing process or?
I mean, a lot of the things in the county are complaint driven. And so if someone complains or, you know, sometimes we have gone by, if we're in a certain area, like in Haiku, there's a, there's a applicant out there. Well, sometimes maybe just stop by as well and just double check or that could be done as well. But if there is any question regarding enforcement, we would turn it over to ZIAID for zoning enforcement. But it is complaint driven by the county.
Also, I just wanted to add that B and Bs and STRHs are not given like indefinitely. They have a certain amount of time that they're allowed to do, and then they come in for renewals. And when they come in for renewals, the planner usually will go back out and try to verify that everything is the way it is and that you didn't build eight more houses or structures in the backyard. Like we, we try to do like a walkthrough to make sure everything's on the up and up and matches the current application. And we do also keep track of complaints or anything like that. Yeah.
And to note also for renewals, they, they don't necessarily come before the body again. Usually we do administratively as long as it's okay, but you could still pull any application to see and bring it before the commission again, if you have any questions about it. So these are some of the things, the STRH requirement, once they're approved, they're required to have a sign up, a two-square-foot sign with the permit number, twenty-four-hour number for the manager and Department of Planning, ZIAID phone, phone number. You know, in case they want to make a claim or say something about that particular property. Permit holders must ascend to a budding and directly across the street neighbors, letter of approval with permit number, house rules and twenty-four-hour number for manager. So again, it's just allowing the public to comment, bring anything up that they see regarding these permits in their neighborhood. So what triggers planning commission review? So for short-term rental homes, two or more short-term rentals operating within the five hundred feet distance. There's protests from two or more adjacent or directly across the street owners or lessees. Written protests comprising fifteen percent or thirty percent of owners within the five hundred distance. And if a variance was obtained to meet the requirement for STRH. So those are the things that trigger it for us to bring an application before you. For B and Bs, it's two permitted B and Bs operating within the five hundred foot distance. Again, written protest, if, same thing, variance was obtained to meet the requirements for B and B. In Hana, when four or more bedrooms proposed for use for Lenai or Mulukai for initial permit application. So every application that comes in from Lenai or Mulukai, we're taking it to the commission. That's their request for B and Bs and in the urban reserve district. For LUC or Land Use Commission Special Permits, this is what Curt mentioned earlier, you know, if it's, if it's less than fifteen acres, it'll come before, it could come before the planning commission. If it's over, the state gets involved. Causes for permit revocation or non-renewal. So some of the things, you know, are obvious. If someone's false or misleading information regarding their application, they could be banned for two years from applying. A permit holder who's delinquent in taxes or just not compliance with the conditions and then, you know, other state, federal, county laws that they're not complying with. Also reports for noise, that's an issue that we've seen in many planning commissions if, if the neighbors complain. Also, there's also a strict for renewal. Would they have to reply at least sixty days prior to the expiration of the application? So that's something we emphasize with the applicants who are going to renew their permit, just to make sure that you need to apply at least sixty, sixty days before your permanent application expires. So that's a deadline set by code.
Do you guys send out invoices or any notice?
No, that's, that's another thing we emphasize with applicants. We're not going to send anything out. This is put on your calendar. You know, set in stone somewhere that you need to apply sixty days prior to the expiration of the permit. Or else it'd just be expired.
And they miss their deadline, then they're canceled.
Yeah. And if they reapply, they have to apply. So that's why we want to emphasize with them. Yeah. Oh, okay. So that's basically it. I just want to give you a general overview and a lot of the details will be in the staff report like Candace mentioned. We do go through a thorough review of the application. We list the criteria for you to, to review and make sure it lines up and then you're the deciding body.
So you vet all the applications, right? So do you find instances when their farm plan isn't legit or, you know, they're proposing something other than what they actually have?
It's a lot of, yeah, we go through pretty extensively in detail. Especially like recently they have this, you know, fifteen-year requirement or STRHs for it to be constructed and owned, owned for fifteen years prior to applying. That's kind of a new thing that came up and we've had people like short, like a few months, we're like, you gotta wait till next, next year to apply. And so these are the types of things we go into detail when we actually review it. So by the time it gets to you, it's polished and, and we wouldn't bring it before you if it wasn't ready to go. And so, yeah, and so you're basically, we'll follow up and ask some more questions that you may have before you decide on it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, look at our cute picture. I didn't know you were going to use that, Wilton. All right. So that ends today's portion. Like I said, at the next meeting, they'll be, oh, I'm sorry, Court Counsel. You need to, that ends the current divisions portion. I gotta turn it over to Court Counsel. Do you want to switch laptops with me?
I'm, I'm logged in at the meeting. Let me see if I can screen share here. If not, then I can bring, I have a thumb drive. I can bring it over there.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to do it from here and if not, I'll put it over there. Hope this mic is not. Okay. So let's see. Screen share.
Yep, looks good.
All right. This looks like it seems to be working so far. Let me see if the moving this works. Okay, how do I do this? Okay. It works. Everybody ready? I don't know, Chair, if you want to take a break or just move right into it? Because I know we have another meeting in three.
Yeah, I think we go forward on ahead.
Okay. Well, these might not be in the order on the agenda, but I think it's covering everything. First item is the State Sunshine Law. This is very important. Honestly wish we had more than five members here, but this is a, this is the state open meetings law. And I'm going to go over some things, but this, this actually does affect things you do both inside and outside of the meeting. So this is important stuff. You're not expected to retain all of this information. That's one of the reasons you have a corporation council at your meetings is to help you with these. But we want you to take away some key things. If you've got questions, please feel free to ask. But again, you're supposed to memorize everything, but you should be able to get out of this what you can and can't do outside of a meeting. What's the purpose and intent of the sunshine law? Sunshine law is Hawaii revised statute, section ninety-two. The intent is to open up governmental process to scrutiny. I don't know why I keep getting these team chat messages. I'm sorry. That's very frustrating. I, I know. Okay. The policy, the, the policies here are to open up the governmental process to public scrutiny and participation by requiring boards to conduct their business as openly as possible. That means, absent a specific statutory exception, board business cannot be discussed between board members outside a noticed public meeting. What does this govern? Well, it, it governs conducting meetings, disseminating documents during meetings, public notice of meetings, minutes of meetings and interactions between board members outside of regularly scheduled meetings. Why do I keep getting this message? Yeah, I'll, I'll work on that. Actually. Actually, you know what? We will be, we will be logging off of the, this, and so I won't get those messages anymore.
And sharing.
Yeah. Okay, now let's see. Back to the PowerPoint presentation. Okay, sorry about that. Okay. What's required for open meetings? Every meeting of the board is open to the public. And either in person or by interactive conference technology, that's our fancy word for WebEx in this case. All interested persons shall have the opportunity to submit data views or arguments in writing on any agenda item. That's your written testimony and your oral testimony. All interested persons shall have the opportunity to present oral testimony on any agenda item. The board may make reasonable time limits for oral testimony. Three minutes is typical, but the county council has gone lower than that in cases where they've got large groups. I think commission has done that before as well. And oral testimony cannot be limited to the start of the meeting only. It's normally not a problem with the planning commission, which typically takes testimony only when each item comes up. But that's an important thing to note. You can't say we're going to take. You can't say we're going to take all of our testimony at the beginning of the meeting. That's a newer rule, but it doesn't really affect the, the planning commission very much. Meetings by interactive conference technology. This is allowed if there's audio and visual interaction between all board members and members of the public in attendance. Notice states that the public can attend a meeting in any location where a board member is present or if remote where the public meeting is to occur. And quorum is based on all members participating, no matter where they are located. You, the general rule is you have to have a camera on at least a quorum of members, but you need to have that, that, you know, video and audio among, among members and the public. But if you have audio problems, you at least have to have that quorum present by video. Must include the video and audio of the board member. The member does not need to be present at the place available to the public, but that place must have audio and video. And the member has to state who is there at the meeting with the member. So if you're from home or someplace else, you need to state where you are and who, if anyone is there is with you unless they are minors. So what can you do outside of a meeting? It's technically correct that two members can discuss matters relating to board business outside of a meeting so long as no commitment for a vote is made or sought and so long as the two members do not make up a quorum of that board. Now, I generally recommend just don't discuss board business outside of meetings, but you technically can to have two people discuss. What you can't do is discuss with two people and then discuss the same thing with a third person. That violates the sunshine law. They call that a serial communication. So keep that in mind. As a general rule, just try not to discuss board, board business with other board members outside of meetings and you will always be okay. Wait for the meeting. Other, other rules with communications between members, that's just what I said. Don't talk about board business outside of a meeting. No more than two can discuss, no serial communications. Sorry, I just covered that. That includes any discussions by phone, email, Facebook, you know, online, any sort of social media. So you're going to want to be cognizant of that if you're posting things online about board business, just, you know, be aware. What about social gatherings? Just avoid discussing board business with other board members. Can you discuss with other non-board members? Generally, the sunshine law does not apply when you are talking to members of the public, but there's a caveat there that if you're in a contested case, you may be prohibited from discussing things that are involved in that contested case with other members of the public. Now, a, we already have the interactive tech conference technology. We went over there. And there's certain exceptions for this, for, for electing board officers and other things, but again, I would just recommend not discussing outside of meetings. So that's one of those key things that we want you to take away from here. Don't go and discuss what you're doing, you know, at, at the commission meetings outside of the meetings. That's one of the bigger no-no's. You can technically discuss with one other person, but the whole idea of the sunshine law is that the public knows why you're making your decisions, how you're arriving in that decision-making and has in general the same information that you do. Now, one thing that you can do in certain cases, what are other permitted interactions of members? One of them is to form what they call a temporary investigative group. That means two or more, but less than a quorum of a board can be assigned to do various things. The scope of their investigation and the scope of their authority has to be defined at a board meeting. The, the, once that group is formed, they can go and investigate those, those items without having agendized meetings, you know, so they can, you know, go and, and do their, for example, if they were going to try to rewrite a section of the rules, maybe two, three or four of you could get together and do that. And all findings and recommendations must be presented to the entire board, so the full commission at a subsequent meeting. The deliberation and decision-making can occur at a subsequent meeting. This means it takes a minimum of three meetings for that to happen. One meeting to form the group and outline their scope, another meeting to report back to you, at which you can ask questions, but you can't take action, and then a third meeting where you can actually take action to do something. And then no discussion of the topic will, can be discussed until the deliberation and decision-making can, can be, can occur. So like I said, when the reporting happens, you have to report and ask questions, but no discussion, no deliberation, decision-making until a next meeting. I think they want the public to have the same information as the full commission in those cases. If you are going to attend a meeting or presentation outside of a meeting, but on something that involves board business, two or more, but less than a quorum can attend these meetings. So let's say there's like a community association meeting or, you know, an important community meeting, something like that, less than a quorum can attend that. Oh, and that meeting involves board business, which is, you know, what items that are on your agenda are likely to come before you, then less than a quorum can attend that. This, these are for, again, matters relating to official board business so long as not specifically and exclusively organized for or directed to members of the board. It could be another entity, a legislative hearing, a convention, a seminar, a community meeting. What can the board do at that meeting? Members can participate in discussions, including amongst themselves. Discussion must be during and part of informational meeting or presentation. No commitments to vote on the matter sought or made. And at the next duly noticed meeting, the member shall report who attended, what was presented and discussed and what was related to board business. So if you go to those meetings, there can't be more than four of you. If you look around and you see that there's five, then we would, and it's on board business, we'd highly advise for one of you guys to leave. You know, I know that's unfortunate. Hopefully a lot of the information in those meetings could be recorded or, you know, other things, but that's what the sunshine law says. And, you know, that could be arguably overly restrictive, but it's, it's what the law is, so we'd advise you to follow that. What constitutes board business? You've heard this term a lot. Well, the sunshine law defines a board business as specific matters over which a board has supervision, control, jurisdiction or advisory power that are actually pending before the board or that can be reasonably anticipated to arise before the board in the foreseeable future. This favors a narrow interpretation and this balances between the board members constitutional rights of free expression and association versus the public interest in open government. It's generally limited to discrete proposals or issues that are actually pending before a board, but it also says that are reasonably anticipated to arise before the board in the foreseeable future. So, so if you, if you meet a friend and talk about something that has nothing to do with anything the commission is dealing with, or there's somehow a planning commission lunch, yeah, you can talk about things, just not talk about board business. When can you have closed meetings? There are certain cases where you can. This requires, these are called, yeah, these are called executive meetings generally. They require a two-third affirmative vote on the members present. The purpose of the executive meeting must be announced in open session. Examples are to deal with officer and employee discipline. They can also be to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities. Those are for executive sessions. Notice, this is your agenda notice. It's one of the things that's required as part of the sunshine law. The notice has to be in writing. It needs to be made publicly available. Any regular, special or rescheduled meeting has to be on this agenda. Executive meetings, if anticipated, so if you think there's going to be an executive session, it should be put on the agenda. The agenda must list all the items to be discussed, the date, time and place in the meeting and filed on the county clerk's office. Also needs to be filed in an online calendar that the county maintains. Now, if there are violations of the sunshine law, a board decision might be voided, so it could be essentially undone. An injunction may be issued, that's a court order that would prevent a decision from coming into effect. If there is an intentional violation, a member could be found guilty of a misdemeanor. It's actually a criminal penalty if there's an intentional sunshine law violation or a member can be removed from the committee or board in this case. So there's some various resources there for HRS 92, which is the sunshine law. And another list of, you know, helpful resources there. I'm going to move on to ethics, but we can have questions on sunshine law now if it's okay with the Chair. No questions? Okay. Yeah, I would just generally advise, don't discuss board business outside of your meetings. And then mostly planning staff and myself help with getting your proper agenda noticed. But this could be a reason why sometimes you might want to discuss something and you might not be able to discuss it and that's because the public's entitled in general to notice of what's happening. There is an exception if you're dealing with contested cases, which are more focused on the parties involved in those cases and contested cases is another thing I'm going to go over here. But right now, I'm going to go over the code of ethics. Oh, yes.
Can we share information with friends and family? Or is it just board members that we can't?
You, you can, you can discuss that business, but again, if it, I'm going to get into contested cases a little more. That's, that's a tougher one. Contested cases, you really shouldn't be talking with anybody outside a meeting if you're on a contested case. That's a, a permit or something where you've got final decision-making authority on. But if there's like legislation that's before the commission on an agenda, there's really not a restriction on who you can talk to about that legislation other than the other members. So, you know, if there's a legislation pending and you're being asked for a recommendation on it, or you're doing rule amendments, for example, and there's rule amendments there, you can, that's, those aren't contested cases. So you could talk with, you know, family members, friends, other people about, about those things as long as it's not a contested case. So that's, that's the, the key thing. But the sunshine law itself doesn't really care if you talk to people other than board members. The sunshine law doesn't generally prohibit that. They generally let you talk to other people on those things. So council members, for example, that never, they never do contested cases because the county council is not an agency that can do contested cases. So they can pretty much talk to whomever they would like other than other council members on things coming before the council. Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we allowed to like share agendas on social media?
I don't see why you couldn't share an agenda on social media. Yeah, I, I don't think that's a problem. Now, if you get into like online discussion, you could, you know, that could be a problem, but I don't, I don't know what would prohibit you from, from sharing an agenda. Yeah, if you're just saying, hey, this meeting's happening. You know, I don't think that's a problem. Okay, we're going to go into the code of ethics. That's the Maui County Charter, Article 10. So those are prohibitions. You are considered county agents essentially for purposes of the, the Board of Ethics or for the Code of Ethics. So you're required to follow the Code of Ethics. And as part of that, there are certain prohibitions, accepting any gifts or, or money, engage in any business transaction or activity, or have a financial interest that is incompatible with the proper discharge of the commissioner's duties or may impair a commissioner's independence of judgment and the performance of an official duty. It's, you also may not fail to disclose a financial interest or vote on a matter affected by such interest or engage in deliberations, which is a newer requirement of the, of the law. Now, whether a conflict of interest or other ethical question is raised by anyone, or sorry, whenever that is raised by anyone regarding any member of the committee, the affected member should promptly make a full disclosure of the circumstances to the committee. If the committee member has a, a financial interest in any matter that may be affected by an action of the committee, that member is disqualified from participating and voting in all actions related to such matters.
Vice Chair.
Yes.
Does that include us making recommendations?
If, if you have a potential financial interest, it, it could in a certain case, but again, this is engaging in deliberation. But whether there's a financial interest that's sufficient to trigger that is something as I'm going to get to, that the Board of Ethics can review and, and make a determination on.
Yes, I did sync legal counsel online and they said, no, ours is a recommendation. So I was not prohibited from deliberations.
Yeah, we can, we can discuss that further. There's.
Just want to bring that up.
So there's a, a newer requirement in the sunshine law that talks about deliberations in those cases, but again, the, the ultimate decision as to whether there's a conflict, it can be made by the Board of Ethics. So if there is a conflict or potential conflict, the conflict needs to be disclosed on the record. An employer, employee relationship, for example, is a financial interest that must be disclosed, so do so prior to any committee discussion. If a parent or dependent child has a financial interest, that should be disclosed as well. When in doubt, a committee member should decide whether to proceed or not, potentially abstain for voting or engaging in deliberation or request deferral and seek an advisory opinion specifically on the specific issue from the Board of Ethics. Hopefully if you see something coming up in advance, let me know and I can go over the process for requesting an opinion from the Board of Ethics. Hopefully that can be done well in advance of any potential meeting where there could be a conflict, so that can get resolved. If a member obtains an advisory opinion from the Board of Ethics and acts accordingly or acts in accordance with the opinions of the board, the commissioner shall not be held liable for violating the county charter. That's important. Now, what are some of the potential ramifications? Well, if a complaint is filed by someone with the Board of Ethics who believes the decision the commissioner made was affected by the member's financial relationship, there can be, you know, that can happen. There can be a complaint filed and a member could be fined or removed from the planning commission if there's a violation found. So we're going to go on to case law review. Any questions on the Board of Ethics? And again, if you think you may have a conflict, it's always best to disclose that. And, and in general, if there's any doubt, I, I generally recommend someone goes to the Board of Ethics because whatever opinion they give, if you act in accordance with it, you won't be considered to have violated the Code of Ethics. So that's important. Okay. I'm going to go on to case law review. This is sort of a, a, a variety of important cases that I think are going to govern your decision-making, but again, one of the reasons you have legal counsel at these meetings is to be available to advise you on the specific case or the specific applications before you, which is important. Now, when you hear the word takings, which comes into play in a lot of these cases, I, I want to go a bit into detail what that's about. The Takings Clause of the Fifth Amendment states the following, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. Well, what does that mean? The idea of the Takings Clause is that the, the government should not be forced a smaller group of people to bear a burden which should be borne by the public. And so essentially, you can't just tell somebody you have to give the government your property for, for no good reason. The, there are caveats though, and the courts have found that an outright taking of, for example, a permanent public access easement could violate the Takings Clause. Conditioning a permit, for example, a rebuilding permit on the granting such an easement could be lawful if it's substantially further to government purposes that would justify the denial of the permit. So if you're looking at someone's application and say, this is going to create an impact, we're going to deny your permit because it doesn't meet the criteria, but then you find that if they did something to increase public access, that would make the permit conforming with the law and make it permissible, then there's a potential for that to be added as a condition of that approval. So this is essentially what, what the US Supreme Court held was that the government's power to forbid a particular land uses or to forbid particular land uses in order to advance some legitimate police power purpose includes the power to condition such use upon some concession by the owner, even a concession of property right, so long as the condition furthers the same governmental purpose advanced as the justification for prohibiting, prohibiting the use. So you have to have some connection between the, the statute you're dealing with, which could be the SMA law, which could be the change in zoning criteria, it could be a special permit. So you're going to look for what the permit is for and what that permit regulates and then look at what the condition you're putting on that property owner is to make sure that it furthers the goal of that permit. to make sure that it furthers the goal of that permit. So there's also the issue, so what I just talked about, they generally call rational nexus. Some type of connection between the condition you're putting on the property and the law that's requiring you to review and approve the permit. In addition, any sort of condition like that has to be roughly proportional to the impact the persons, the, the, the development's having. So for example, someone building a single-family home, it's going to have a significantly, you know, significant less of a traffic impact than a subdivision building 100 homes. So the amount of traffic mitigation you could make one home do could be very different than the traffic mitigation you could make 100 homes do. Even if that one home, when it comes in, there's a bad traffic situation, you still have to have the impact proportional to what they're asking for in the permit. And so that's what's called rough proportionality. And the court said, no precise mathematical calculation is required. The city or the government, in this case, the commission, must make some sort of individualized determination that the required dedication is related both in nature and extent to the proposed development's impact. So you need to have a legitimate state interest, which you generally will have if a law's already passed, like the Coastal Zone Management Act, or, or the, you know, other land use laws that you're reviewing, short-term rental home permits, for example. You need to have that nexus between the intent of the law and the impact of the, you know, the condition and the impact the conditions mitigating, and roughly proportional. That means you can't have a impact so out of whack with, with the nature of the development is, you know, that's the idea of requiring one individual to bear a public burden when there's a, you know, a traffic impact that is, affects everybody. You can't make them build that. You know, you can't make the single-family homeowner build an entire highway, you know, in, in those situations if it's way out of proportion to what they're asking for from the county. Yes.
Is this different than eminent, eminent domain?
Yeah, eminent domain's a little different. This, this, this is the same idea. Eminent domain would be, you know, if, if a government agency says we need to build a highway through your, through your house, so we're condemning all this land and they have to pay you for it in that case. So they'll give you fair market value and you may be able to go to court to fight the fair market value of that and that can take years. This is the government being able to do that without paying for, for the right. And so what it's saying is that you don't have to pay for it if it meets this criteria. If it doesn't meet this criteria, I mean, the county can generally, or the county or the state can generally condemn like a public access easement or something like that if it meets certain criteria, but it has to pay fair market value for that generally. And, and that happens from time to time. You know, jurisdictions do that. They have the authority to do that. But, you know, so that was the, the law, the, what the Constitution says. "Nor shall private property be taken without just compensation." Because this is, you know, the Constitution, so they're thinking of, you know, the King of England back then, or king or queen, being able to just take someone's private property without giving them money. They put it in the Constitution that says you can't take without compensation. But the Supreme Court has held in some cases, if it's dealing with an impact of, of a project, you can require things like, you know, if you're, if you're building something that's going to cut off beach access, you can require them to have beach access easements in certain cases. But you have to do some type of analysis in order to, to show that. So the objectives and policies of HRS 205A, the Coastal Zone Management Act, are examples of legitimate state interests. And so among those policies are, you know, I, I wrote, I wrote that down, but those are examples of, of those interests. So among the objectives are protection, preservation, restoration, improvement of the quality of coastal scenic and open space resources, and the designing and locating of new developments to minimize the alteration of existing public use to and along the shoreline. So now, what the Hawaii Court of Appeals determined is that even if a development under the Coastal Zone Management Act is shown to have a substantial adverse effect in accordance with the statute, the commission is still required to determine whether the effect can be practically minimized and when minimized is clearly outweighed by public health, safety, or compelling public interests. Commission may impose reasonable conditions to achieve the minimization. So you see the court sort of putting this Supreme Court, this is the Hawaii Court of Appeals, putting the Supreme Court's criteria into play with, using the Coastal Zone Management Act. In this case, is an example of, you know, what you're supposed to do. Rather than denying a permit, they do want the commission to consider whether there's any way to minimize the impacts of the development. And, you know, if you do that and find there's no way to minimize these impacts, you can deny a permit. But in this case, they actually overturned the Planning Commission's decision to deny a permit and said, you need to do a further analysis to consider if there's any mitigative conditions you can put on the project. So again, the conditions can be put on if they're reasonable. And further, the policies and objectives of 205A, going back to that US Supreme Court analysis, you know, legitimate state interest, nexus, and rough proportionality. The commission cannot delegate its duties under those statutes. So the commission must make findings that development will not violate the policies and objectives of HRS 205A before issuing an SMA permit. That's an example of something you're required to do. And then moving on to other case law, there, there are requirements that the commission has when it reviews permits. So we went over the conditions that you could impose on projects and your limitations to impose conditions. You also, under Hawaii state law and the Hawaii state constitution, have certain requirements that you have to follow when reviewing permits. For example, you have an affirmative duty to protect cultural resources and the commission is obligated to protect the reasonable exercise of customarily and traditionally exercised rights of native Hawaiians to the extent feasible. Now, how that manifests in each case is very fact-specific. So we can't necessarily give general guidance in all cases that, that's applicable to, to every case. As an example, though, in, there was a case that decided in order to protect cultural resources, developers can be required to retain qualified archaeologists to determine significance of various archaeological sites on lands to be developed and prepare a written report regarding the preservation or salvage of historical resources and archaeological sites prior to the issuance of an SMA. So that's an example of a case, instead of delegating the duty and saying, the developer's going to do this later. It is possible, if you've got evidence on the record, that there are, there are impacts on archaeological, or there are, there are, you know, potentially archaeological sites or other impacts, you can require a developer to do that study or, or provide that information before your decision-making. And so when you make your decision, you can put appropriate conditions like, you know, cultural preserve areas or, or requiring building to be done in a certain way. But you are, you, you may, and in some cases, I think courts would say, have to have that information before you, before taking action. And in addition, the Kapa'aka'i case decided that in order to protect the reasonable exercise of customarily and traditionally exercised rights of Hawaiians to the extent feasible, the commission must make specific findings and conclusions as to the identity and scope of valued cultural, historical, or natural resources in the area, including the extent to which traditional and customary native Hawaiian rights are exercised in the area, the extent to which those resources, including traditional and customary native Hawaiian rights, will be affected or impaired by the proposed action, and the feasible action, if any, to be taken by the commission to reasonably protect native Hawaiian rights if they are found to exist. So I think in the beginning, you need to have some indication that those rights are being affected in, in the record, whether it's public testimony, whether it's you reviewing the application and having that concern. And, and then you're going to have to go through this process or require the developer to go through the process and review their work after they have expert consultations, you know, to require this, you know, three-step process. Essentially, identify those, the, the resources, what impact, if any, will there be, and what action should be taken in the form of conditions to protect those, those resources and rights. And that's an affirmative duty of the commission. It can be trickier if you're looking at smaller projects. Can you require a single development to have, you know, a, a single, a, a smaller development might not have the same type of cultural assessment or archaeological assessment as a long, as a very large thousand-home development or something like that. So that's certainly an, an item that's still developing, I think, as to what extent developers have to do that at the outset. But certainly, if you see evidence of this, that can be a trigger of requiring this review and your consideration in, in permitting of how those rights are impacted by the permits that you might grant. And that's all I have on the case law review. Again, you're not going to be able to get every single court case that could affect everything. But, you know, I, I'm here to assist with that. And it's going to be an application-by-application analysis because there, there's no two are alike. But those are some, some of the general framework of the, the things you're going to be dealing with. So do you want to go with questions on that before we go to sort of, I think this is the final portion, contested cases after this?
Have a two-minute, two-minute break?
Two-minute break? Sure.
Yep.
So, yep, it's 1:58. We'll be back at two o'clock.
Two minutes.
Recess.
It's in the most annoying length.
One second. Welcome back, everybody, to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 12, 2024. We are in the middle, or well, I should say, towards the end of our orientation workshop. Question from Commissioner Kealoha.
Never mind. Well, I guess I, yeah, I do have a quick question. Maybe it's not a quick question, hopefully it's quick. But I always, you know, we usually make a way to hop right back to the question.
Yes, sorry.
We usually make motions to approve with conditions and we don't, I guess I, we don't typically make motions to deny applications. And I wonder, I'm just wondering, like, and it's because of that law that you just went over, because we want to be able to minimize the impacts with conditions.
That, that's the SMA law in particular has that particular language. Not other, all other laws have that same language. So you may have a little more freedom in, like a change in zoning request or recommendation to council. That's a legislative act. So if the council just, if you just think, no, this should stay zoned what it is, you can recommend that they not grant the change in zoning request. And other permits, you might not have to go through that deep of an analysis of conditions to see if you can mitigate all those impacts. But the special management area permit law has specific language in the statute that talks about doing that analysis.
So if we were to, to make a motion to deny an application, we always have this, take it back to, to, and connect it to one of those, what are those called, those things that we have to go, criteria? We have to connect it back to which criteria?
Yeah.
And then what does that look like? We just, we would say, you know, it's because we don't believe that it fits within this criteria and then we would have to give, like, some small explanation of why. I guess you've never seen that process before, so I don't know what it looks like.
Yeah, we've had several decisions and orders that have denied permits in the past. We can get, that some of them will be as a matter of record. But what would normally happen if something's denied, you would have a decision and order. Usually, it would say findings of fact, conclusions of law, decision and order. Your findings of fact would be paragraph by paragraph. Here's what the application was, here's what happened. Conclusions of law and, and the criteria for the application. Your conclusions of law, paragraph by paragraph, again, would generally say, you know, you failed to meet this criteria because of X, Y, and Z. Again, the applicant usually has the burden to show that they meet the requirement. We're going to go into that a bit. The next thing we have is contested cases, which is where these applicants come up. But that's, that's where you'd look at that. So you would see, okay, you don't necessarily have to get all of the details, but you need to give the planner and myself, who will eventually work on a decision and order, your, your basis for, for denying. It should be based on the record. So any denial should be based on the information before you. If you don't have enough information to make a decision, you can ask for additional information. You can ask, it's one of the reasons you have applicant questions is so that they can, you know, answer things. And, you know, if you see they don't meet some of the criteria, you can go over all the criteria they don't meet and the reason why you made that decision. Different planning commissions could theoretically arrive at different conclusions on the same permit application. So some of it depends on how you weigh the, the stuff in the application. That's why these are discretionary permits. You have some discretion, you just can't be arbitrary or, you know, base your decision on facts outside of the record. You know, say like, well, I don't like that area or I, I went there, you know, a few years ago and this hap, you know, it's not that, it's, I looked at the, the application. It doesn't meet this criteria because you've got a severe, you know, increase in traffic here that you're not mitigating in a case where traffic is a relevant factor in the application. Or you are, look like you're going to have significant impacts on, you know, on, I don't know, potentially archaeological sites and you're not doing enough to mitigate that. And, and so that's, that's an impact that you haven't mitigated. So, you know, you, you would do that, you'd have a decision and order. We could probably get you examples of some in the past. I know short-term rental home permits have been denied. There was an SMA denied in Hana not too long ago. You know, it, it, it happens from time to time. And then the, again, those are in contested cases which can be appealed to circuit court. So they can challenge your decision, take it to court and tell the, and ask the court to review your decision and say, you know, you incorrectly denied my permit and here's why. So they get their day in court and can even appeal that to higher levels if they think the permit denial was incorrect. But yeah, that's, that's, you, you want to set up the department and myself for helping you draft a decision and order that is, you know, if, if it's a denial and the only party is the applicant, then a denial triggers, you have to do that decision in order because that's an adverse effect on their rights. If it's an approval, generally, that can be done by letter, setting out the conditions if there's no other parties to that, to that contested case, if it's a single party. If you're dealing with an intervention, as we have in some other cases, you, you have to do that decision in order in the case of an approval or a denial. Like, for example, we just had Grand Wailea a while ago. For any decision you make, even if there's an approval, you would have to have that as a written decision and order because you could have another party appeal that decision there. And so that's, that's how we usually handle multi-party contested cases. It's a bit more strict on, you know, on those types of approvals. And I'll cover a little more of that in contested cases, which is the next section. Is that okay for now or do you want me to move on to the next section?
You think you'll be able to be done with all of this in like 15 minutes?
Yeah, I should be under that.
Okay.
All right, contested cases. These are covered by the Hawaii Administrative Procedures Act, HRS Chapter 91. What's a contested case? It's a proceeding in which the legal rights, duties, or privileges of specific parties are required by law to be determined after an opportunity for agency hearing. Required by law means that the hearing is required by statute, agency rule, or constitutional due process. So under your rules, all proceedings in which action by the commission will result in a final determination of the legal rights, duties, or privileges of a specific party or parties and which is appealable pursuant to HRS 91-14 HRS as amended is a contested case. A change in zoning or community plan amendment is, is not a contested case because you're not the final decision-maker on it. It goes to the county council. County council's proceeding is not a contested case because they're, they are not defined as an agency under HRS 91. So contested cases are before you if you're deciding someone's legal rights and you're the final decision-maker on that, on that permit or request. There's some case law. The ENJ Lounge Case, which came out in 2008, determined that if a public hearing item is a contested case, all provisions of HRS Chapter 91 apply. That means if there's only one party applying for a permit, that it's still a contested case. In the past, we had thought that it's only a contested case if another party intervenes. That's not the case. If it's a single party before you, you still treat it as a contested case, even if it's one party. And there's some, some cases that, that a SMA use permit is a contested case and a state land use district boundary amendment is also a contested case before the state land use commission. It is not when it is before the county council, that's a bit different. But they still have to follow certain procedures. What are the requirements of a contested case? Notice to the parties. The parties need to be able to submit evidence. Cross-examination and rebuttal evidence is required. So that's why we generally have public testifiers. The parties can ask them questions. If it's just the applicant, they can ask questions. The party initiating the proceeding has the burden of proof, including the burden of producing evidence as well as the burden of representation. The degree or quantum of proof of persuasion. The degree or quantum of proof shall be by a, they call a preponderance of the evidence. That means the party with the burden has to show it's more likely than not that whatever, that the permit criteria are met. So more likely than not is different. That's, that's about 51% threshold, if you're just over the line. That's to be distinguished from, you know, like a beyond a reasonable doubt threshold in a criminal case, you have to go, you know, that's sort of described as 90% or higher likely. In a case of preponderance of the evidence, an applicant has to show it's more likely than not that they meet the criteria. That's generally what we refer to as preponderance of the evidence.
One second. Just want to acknowledge Commissioner Decos is online.
Okay. Now, the decision maker has to personally consider the whole record or such portions thereof as may be cited by the parties. And every decision and order adverse to a party must be in writing and accompanied by separate findings of fact and conclusions of law. The decision has to be served on the parties, and parties are entitled to judicial review of the decision. That means going to court. Under judicial review, an administrative agency's findings of fact are reviewable for clear error, while its conclusions of law are freely reviewable. So if you make a determination on the facts, a court is not supposed to come in and disagree with you because they would weigh something different. However, if you make an error of law, the court can come in and say, no, they got the law wrong, and we're going to change things because of that. But the court should not be substituting its own judgment for your judgment in the review of a permit. And that's sort of what I said now. Findings of fact should not be set aside unless they're clearly erroneous in, in view of the evidence. That's more of the same there. So upon review of a record, the court may affirm the decision of the agency or remand the case with instructions for further proceedings. Remand means send back to you, essentially. Or it may reverse or modify the decision and order if the substantial rights of the petitioners may have been prejudiced because the administrative findings, conclusions, decisions, or orders are. There's a list of criteria for overturning your decisions, in violation of constitutional or statutory provisions, in excess of the authority granted, made upon unlawful procedure, affected by other error of law, clearly erroneous in view of the reliable probative and substantive evidence on the whole record, or arbitrary or capricious, or characterized abusive discretion, or clearly unwarranted exercise of discretion. Things to remember. When you're dealing with a contested case, you're exercising your adjudicatory function. You need to remain impartial and not openly make conclusory remarks until all of the evidence has been received. Your decision must be based on the evidence in the record. That's very important. You should not be basing your decision on thing, on evidence that's not made a matter of record. Consider yourself like a jury in a, in a court case. You would not be doing your own separate investigation on, on that item. You would have the parties bring you that evidence. If you have questions or don't have enough information, you can ask that of the parties. You can ask that of the parties or of the department, if it's a case of an application, to get that information for you. Obviously, avoid any statements that may be mistaken as an attack on someone's race, sex, gender, or religion. And that's all I have there. But for contested cases, again, you know, I, I sort of think of it as you are, if you were on a trial in court, how would you want the judge or the jury to, to weigh things? I think you'd want them to review only the evidence that was submitted by the parties and make their decision based on the record. If, if you base your decision on something outside of the record, the parties don't really have a good way of dealing with that evidence, and, and it's not really a fair hearing to them. So that's important that you base your, your decision making based on evidence of record. But if you need additional information, you can ask that of the parties or the departments. If someone, if an applicant has the burden of proof, you can say, look, I still do not believe you meet this criteria. I need more evidence for that. Or you're not showing me the impacts that you're having. I want this additional analysis on that as an example. So, so that's what I have for contested cases. Again, I or another legal counsel will be here for those items. And so you're not expected to memorize all of this, but it's a good framework for you to be prepared when those, those items come up.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you.
We have on the agenda acknowledgement of HR packet. Is somebody supposed to talk through that?
Or we just say, yes, we got it? Okay, everybody got that in the packet? Yep. And you guys online, got the HR packet? Thumbs up. Okay. Director's report?
Great. You'll see the links to the SMA minor and exemptions reports. Oh, we need testimony.
Oh, do we have anybody signed up to testify on the director's report? Nothing online? If you wish to testify on the director's report, please notify staff in the chat. Otherwise, final countdown, three, two, one. Other testimony is closed. Go ahead.
Great. So as I started, the SMA minor and exemptions reports are linked in your agenda, and if you have questions about those, we can answer them now. If not, I will move on to the next item. All right. So seeing none. The next item is a proposed, proposed schedule for you all to review. We need your blessing for this schedule for 2025. Happy to answer any questions that you have about that. I don't think we need to vote on this.
Okay. Do we?
I don't think so. No need. Okay, great. So we'll proceed with.
I might be gone on March 25th.
It happens.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's any comments while we're here.
Those as well. No, you will, you're on to the 31st, I believe, of March.
So we gotta, we gotta do a celebratory for you. All right. Great. So the last item here is our future agenda. I also want to mention at this time that on future, future agendas, oh, no, I'm not going to mention this at this time. But I will say, future agenda is, you've got a Kanaha Park Great Water Reuse Facility, an SM1 for that, and the continuation of the Grand Wailea contested case. So that's your next agenda on the 26th, 26th, is that correct? Yeah, 26th of November. Also, too, you may have heard in the news that the SMA rules were ruled invalidated. Just so you know, our current rules stand. So the, the previous rules take the place of those rules while we work this out. I can't speak to what the, what we're going to do, but when I, we're in conversation with our attorneys on next step. So we'll let you know when we have those dialed in. Other than that, that is the extent of the director's report. Next regular meeting is November 26th.
Any questions? Seeing none.
Okay. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We have our South Maui Community Plan meeting starting at 3 o'clock with its own meeting link for everybody online. Thank you for your time today. Ahuiho.